I'd like to call to order the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for April 5, 2021. We have two agenda items on our, on our agenda item tonight. Item number one is let's talk Wheat Ridge neighborhood engagement program update. And item number two is a review of the noise ordinance that we worked on last year. I would, I would like to start our meeting as we do almost every meeting with citizen comment. If you would like to provide comment on either of the agenda items, number one, the Wheat Ridge Neighborhood Engagement Program or item number two, the review of the noise ordinance. You may do so at this time. If you would like to, to speak, we're using the Zoom format. And if you would raise your hand in the Zoom format and that's located at generally at the bottom of your screen, if you'll click the participant icon, it's in the lower right hand corner is the raised hand feature. If you would do that, we will recognize you and bring you into the meeting. And when we do, if you would please introduce yourself, give us your first name and your last name. If you'd please spell your last name and give us your address. We would appreciate that. The time limit on each speaker is three minutes. You may aggregate time by having another speaker or two maximum to donate their time to you. If you would like to have that happen, please let us know when you start talking, who you're speaking for and have them available. Hopefully if we need to confirm that. So we would like to go with citizen comment and I will go to Ms. Scheck and see if anyone has their hands raised in the Zoom format.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have Mo Keller.
Okay, Mo Keller, if you would please come on and introduce yourself, give us your address. You will have three minutes and our mayor pro temp will be our timekeeper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Also with me is my husband who would like to go after me for his three minutes.
That'll be fine.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. On December 16th, 2019, our neighborhood attended the study session in which the council designed the new noise ordinance specifying the permit system for residences and businesses. We were impressed with the deliberation shown and very pleased with the consideration that the neighborhoods like ours finally received. The number of six permits per year, each representing a day, was decided upon as a reasonable amount of permits and we agreed with them that then and we agree with it now. Our neighborhood also attended the August 2020 study session when the formal vote was taken on this new ordinance with an enactment date in September. I must admit then how disheartened we were to see this ordinance back before you again without it even being implemented for more than six months. Again, we do not, again, we do reiterate our support for the new noise ordinance and strongly request that there be no changes to the six permit limit. There is no question that the city is getting more restaurant and bars that will occasionally want loud music. This is already becoming a problem on 38th Avenue and could become one on 44th Avenue as well. All the more reason to set a six permit system. As the multiplier effect of two or three businesses, each with six permits can affect a neighborhood by potentially having 12 or 18 outdoor events affect that same neighborhood. As our city becomes noisier and outside events increase, it is important and imperative that the city council keep to a low number of permits that protect our residential neighborhoods, but still allow business to have a loud outdoor event periodically. This is exactly what you did in 2019. Please do continue the ordinance that you have designed. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to now recognize Steve Keller.
Hello, am I audible, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mayor and city council, thank you very much. We all know that loud, outdoor, amplified sound events always will disturb adjacent neighborhoods to some degree. That is why the 2020 noise ordinance is necessary and is not an excessive interference by government. Our neighborhood strongly endorses the permit system and the limit of six permits per year. This number offers businesses a fair opportunity to put on such events while it protects the freedom of Wheat Ridge residents to enjoy peace in their homes and yards. Over the years, our neighborhood has been persistently distressed by frequent and obnoxiously loud side, live music, and we have fought against it from the very beginning. Our neighborhood and others now have some protection from noise imposed upon them against our will, and we must not go back to where we were before. The reasonable limit of six events per year was carefully deliberated by city council. A business model of more events is a poor fit where the business adjoins a residential neighborhood. Neighborhoods receive few to no benefits from being adjacent to outdoor amplified sound events. The situation is always unfairly one-sided. The noise sources gain, nearby neighborhoods lose. Certain Wheat Ridge businesses believe that six permits per year is too low a number. We strongly disagree for two important reasons. First, a business does not have an inherent right to impose unwanted noise on adjacent residents such that the livability of the neighborhood is threatened. My rights end where they infringe upon your rights is an established American principle. Second, a compromise already has been reached in that the six permits are allowed. With six permits, a neighborhood is already giving up six days per year of the peace and quiet it previously enjoyed. Businesses were not ambushed by the new ordinance. A business owner should perform due diligence with the city before starting a program of frequent, loud, outdoor, live music events. The city should not adopt a decibel level based system instead of a permit system. This would unfairly force nearby residents to have to measure and monitor noise sources year in, year out. Also, everyone will have decibel meters and there will be endless onsite haggling over whether the noise ordinance exceeds legal limits. With a permit system, the noise originator either has a permit or not. Nearby residents will know this and thus the number of noise complaints will decrease. The city also should not adopt a reasonableness standard instead of a permit system. The concept of reasonableness is so subjective that making this judgment should not be imposed on responding patrol officers. They will be trying to navigate between the noise source and the complainants. In our neighborhood, we have seen this happen many times and it simply does not work. In conclusion, we ask the city council to value the peace and livability of our Wheat Ridge neighborhoods as the noise ordinance is deliberated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. And just for the record, would you please give us your name and address?
Oh, certainly. Stephen Keller, 4325 Iris Street, Wheat Ridge.
Thank you so much. Ms. Scheck, do we have other callers with their hands up in the Zoom format?
We do, Mayor. We have Erin McAllister.
Okay, Erin McAllister, please join us and introduce yourself and give us your address and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, thank you for your time today. My name is Erin McAllister. I don't live in Arvada. I do own, own T-Bird Roadhouse, which is located at 9701 West 44th Avenue in Wheat Ridge, Colorado. Am I okay to talk freely now?
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Okay, so we have encountered many different instances with the Kellers and, you know, a few other individuals that live on that block. The entire time, every band that we had last year, from the time that we opened till the time that this ordinance was passed, I believe the, the police officers were dispatched to T-Bird Roadhouse and we complied with every, every command that they had. We also encouraged them to do decimal meetings. I've also sat with the police department and officers at that time who have read decimal readings at the individuals' houses, which the decimal readings are only reach about 50 or 60 at their property line. At any point did it, it never reached 75 decimals. It rarely reached 70 decimals. We've taken video of the decimal readings and at, at most points, the, the noise or the sound that could be heard at their property line is equivalent or no louder to the, the traffic that is on 44th Avenue. When we do have live permits, it is a, or live music at T-Bird Roadhouse, it does increase our, our sales by three times, four times. This last weekend, we did over $4,000 in sales on a single Saturday with only two bands, which if we were able to have another band that day, it would probably approach closer to six grand. As one of the bands that we did have come in, they do come from Longmont all over. They do bring a following to Wheat Ridge and those patrons do go to other businesses in Wheat Ridge, which also include, you know, the Taco Bell, the Corner Store, Buy Gas, Buy Food, and they bring a substantial amount of business to the city of Wheat Ridge. We've had a lot of support from other neighbors on that block, particularly in between, and a couple of other neighbors on that, that block as well. I have accumulated over 125 signatures within one week of even activating that. I'm sure you guys have tons of surveys that support T-Bird Roadhouse, support live music in the community. I think it's, it's, it's not the right time, if anything, to enact something like that with, with everything going on in the community as far as COVID and everything to endorse everybody going inside to watch live music because that would be other options that they have or going to another city. And, and like I said before, the, the decimals were never a nuisance or a problem. We've had many, many neighbors from that block that have came down and supported T-Bird Roadhouse, supported the music. We have apartments directly behind us and most of those residents, if not all of them, support the music at T-Bird Roadhouse. Am I over the minute?
Yes, sir, you are.
Okay, sorry about that.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Yeah.
Ms. Scheck, do we have additional speakers with their hands up?
Um, no, Mayor. I don't see anyone with their hands up. I'm, I'm just going to allow the phone callers to talk so that it's easier for them that they'd like to unmute.
All right. If you are on the telephone and would like to speak at tonight's meeting on agenda item number one or two, now is your opportunity. If you would please unmute yourself and ask to be recognized, we're glad to bring you into the meeting.
I am a neighbor in the Iris Street neighborhood and would like to speak.
Very, thank you very much for calling. If you'll give us your first name and your last name and your address, and if you'd please spell your last name.
My name is Laura Jenkin. My address is 9715 West 43rd Avenue. My last name is J E N K I N S. So I want to thank the mayor and all the city council members for the thoughtful work that they have done on this issue. As many of you may know, the idea of increased noise and where and how it is permitted has been an ongoing problem in this city. For me personally, the problem has been ongoing since 2011. I just want to say thank you for the fantastic work that the city council has done on this. As you can well imagine, having to live next door to noise, whether it's industrial, excuse me, industrial or live music can impact the enjoyment of your own home. I live quite a distance from the T-Bird Roadhouse and yet when I am inside my house trying to quietly read a book, I can hear their music. Now, having said that, I do understand as a neighbor, it's not my right to have 100% peace and quiet, nor is it the right of any business to have live music constantly infringing upon the neighborhood. So as I said before, I really want to thank the city council. I give that what people and what Mr. McAllister are neglecting to recognize in this, he can have music anytime that he would like. He just cannot have music that has amplified sound to it. He would have to have permits for those. So I would encourage him to have music for his patrons on his patio. I think that's a fantastic idea. And then continue with the permits because again, yes, he can increase his sales and that's a fantastic thing to do. One of the things I did participate in the what's, I believe you call it, what's up Wheat Ridge app. I would just caution city council members, I'm a person who worked formally in marketing. That was a great survey. However, you had no authenticators. You had no way to show that people who said they were residents of Wheat Ridge were actually residents of Wheat Ridge. And you also had no way to verify that all of those people who were identifying themselves as business owners in this city were actually business owners as well. All it asked for was your email address and most of us have multiple email addresses. So people could have presented themselves as a resident and answered it one way. They could have presented themselves as a business owner and presented it another way. And my final point I want to make is to a certain extent, it's incumbent upon the city council to sometimes let a business fail because if they don't have a good business plan for the neighborhood or the part of the city that they're in, then when they don't do well there, another more appropriate business for that location can take it over. So again, thank you for the fantastic work that you've done on the current, current ordinance that you have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for calling tonight. Is there anyone else on the telephone or in the Zoom format that would like to speak tonight on our citizen's right to speak on the council item one or two? Now is your opportunity.
Mayor, we have Catherine.
Okay, Catherine, please enter the conversation. If you'd give us your first name and your last name, if you'd please spell your last name and give us your address. You may go from there.
Hi, I'm Catherine Grant, 3881 Estes Street. Was there anything else I was supposed to add?
That should be good.
Do I get it all? Okay. Well, I just wanted to say that we've really enjoyed the Roadhouse and we've seen some really lovely music and enjoyed being outside and in the community. And it had a real feeling of the community coming together. And in these times, especially when small businesses, small businesses are failing and struggling so hard, I just really feel for them and I'm so happy for them that they did have a good weekend and they made $4,000. And if they could just have a little bit of amplified sound, not split anyone's eardrums, I think it's a beautiful thing for the community. I mean, there's not that many opportunities for people to get together and enjoy, and enjoy something. So I just wanted to say we like their offerings and we appreciate them creating a forum where people can come together and enjoy some beautiful music or, you know, rock music or whatever they've got. We, we happen to see, or I happened to see something that was just kind of mellow and, and just really nice and enjoyable. And I hope that they can continue doing well and survive. And I think I'm, I'm just, I, I'm speechless that somebody would say some businesses are meant to fail. Let them. I see them as contributing something important to our community and something rather nice. So that's all.
Thank you very much for calling tonight.
Thank you. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Scheck, do we have any additional callers with their hands raised in the format or anyone on the telephone who would like to speak tonight?
Yes, Mayor. Next up, we have Lindy Mills.
Okay, Lindy Mills, if you would please join us and introduce yourself and give us your address. You may continue at that time.
Hi, this is Lindy Mills, 7105 West 35th. And I'm actually here with Nicole Costa-Lackey. She's a neighbor also. What's your address?
3490 Teller Street.
And we were having trouble finding the words to say what the last caller just said and we just wanted to second that. So thank you.
Okay, thank you for, for calling us this evening.
Absolutely.
Ms. Scheck, do we have anyone with their hands raised in the Zoom format?
No, Mayor. No one else has raised, has raised their hand at this point.
Okay, well, let me give one, one last call for our citizens' right to speak on any agenda item on our agenda tonight. Now is the opportunity to speak and you may do so by raising your hand in the Zoom format or if you're on the telephone, speak up and we'll be happy to bring you into the meeting. Has anyone further raised their hands?
I do have one more hand. I have Chris.
Okay, Chris, please, please join us in the meeting. If you'd give us your first name and your last name and your address. You may go after that.
Chris, if you can hear me, you're on mute. See if I can get him to unmute.
Yes, we can hear you now.
This is Chris Chidley, speaking at 4020 Everett Street. One of the items I believe for the agenda this evening is to talk about the Bel Air review. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, the let's talk neighborhood engagement and that included Bel Air. So please continue.
So on the questionnaire that was sent out to the Bel Air residents, which was, which I believe was generated from the initial residential review for Wheat Ridge for, from about a year ago, flagged lots, flagged lots did not come up. I would like that flagged lots be contributed to the discussion. The city planner had a meeting with a few residents last week. We brought this up and as long as that is added as, as an item to the Bel Air review, that's my comment for this evening that we discuss those.
Okay, thank you very much for calling. The planners are with us tonight, so they have heard your comments. So thank you very much for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Scheck, do we have additional callers for our citizens' right to speak?
Um, no, Mayor, we don't.
Okay, I will give it just a few more seconds. If you would like to speak under citizens' right to speak this evening, this is your opportunity. Please raise your hand in the Zoom format and we will bring you into the meeting.
Mayor, we do have, a previous speaker has, has raised their hand again. I believe that we only hear from them once. Is that correct?
Yes, we only have, provide one opportunity to speak.
Okay, thanks.
Per item. Any further, any further hands raised?
No, Mayor.
Okay, we are going to close our citizens' right to speak. Thank you all for joining us and speaking to the council. We appreciate hearing from you. We will now go on to our first agenda item. This is the let's talk neighborhood engagement update. And Mr. Goff, I will turn this over to you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're excited this evening to bring you an update on our first two neighborhoods in our let's talk program. And I'll turn it over to Ken Johnson, our community development director, to introduce staff who's been working on this and doing a great job.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thanks Patrick as well. I would echo, I think that word that Patrick used, which is we're excited to be in front of you this evening to give you another programmatic update on our let's talk program. As council is, I think, well aware, the 2019 update to the NRS had a strong recommendation to really engage our residents on a more neighborhood granular scale. And we've been pleased to have the resources to be able to do that. So thank you for authorizing the approval of, of two people to, to fill the voids to create that program. We were able to bring Jeff Hurt on in early 2020 and then later in October of that year, Ashley Holland, who we, we stole a little bit from, from Local Works. She's got some, some strong Wheat Ridge connections from her time at the Local Works organization. And she's been part of the program now since October of last year and has been a great contributor along with, with Jeff. So we're really here tonight to give you an update on the program in general, where it's going, where it's been, specifically to give you an update on what we've heard from the two neighborhoods thus far, East Wheat Ridge and Bel Air, as one of the speakers just mentioned. And then, you know, really tell you where we're, we're headed in the near future on the next two neighborhoods as well. So we're really excited about these two new additions to our Wheat Ridge team and what they've been able to accomplish and really the level of participation that we've been able to achieve even during, during the COVID pandemic. And so with that, I will turn it over to Jeff Hurt to give you a more thorough program update.
Thanks, Ken. And yeah, we're excited to share what's happening with the program and kind of what's next. So bear with me. I've got about a 10-minute presentation as I get set up here. Okay, can everyone see the slides? Okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So yeah, so this is the agenda item to update you on the resident engagement program. And our purpose tonight before council is to share both detailed reports and recommendations for what to do next, having completed our first two neighborhoods. And so as a reminder, this program stems from really one of the highest priority recommendations from the NRS in 2019. So you've been getting updates about the program over the last several months with emails and we last spoke with you in September of last year, I think. But to spark your memory is this map that shows how the program breaks the city down into 10 neighborhoods for the purposes of sort of hyper local resident engagement. And so with this program, we conduct what we call resident engagement blitzes in two neighborhoods at a time with the goal of covering the city in about two-year cycles. And so each blitz lasts about four to five months, but as this is a new program, we're tweaking things as we go. So round one of a blitz is about understanding what's important to people that the city can act on in a very open-ended format. And so we don't try to steer the conversation towards any topic and we stay open to whatever the hot button issues are. So it could be anything from safety issues to speeding, to development, to parks, kind of whatever emerges. And round two is about developing a set of tangible actions that respond directly to what we heard about in round one and seeing what resident opinions are on these actions in these neighborhoods. And so the first two neighborhoods, as Ken said, were Bel Air and East Wheat Ridge. And so we've completed the blitzes in those neighborhoods and that's why we're here before you tonight in part. So we're really excited about the interest that this program has seen. So the last, for the last several months in these first two neighborhoods, it's really shown that the 2019 NRS was right, that there is a high demand for focused engagement between the city and residents about neighborhood issues. So we saw strong participation numbers, especially when you factor in COVID and those challenges. For comparison and what the slide shows is the 2019 NRS was considered to have successful and extensive engagement as about a year-long citywide effort, the 26-member resident committee. And we had about 1,000 residents participate in that effort. So for this program and just two of 10 neighborhoods in the city, over about five months, we had about 600 residents participate. So we felt pretty good about this numbers and we had some really good conversations with folks that will give you a snapshot of tonight. And we'll talk a little bit more about the specifics of sort of the who and the how we engaged here in the next couple of slides. So, so these graphics are taken from the reports in your packet that sort of break down the specific numbers in each neighborhood by those that participated in rounds one and round two through both surveys and community meetings. Certainly tons of details in your packet if you wanted to dive deeper on all of this. And we're happy to discuss it with you tonight. So before we get into specifics, I'll just highlight that a primary outcome or sort of deliverable of each of these neighborhood blitzes is a, is a blitz report. So these are included as attachments to your packet and have lots and lots of details, including the specifics of how we reach people, what questions were asked and what residents told us that we'll highlight here momentarily. And so there are also appendices in each of the blitz reports with all the details on how we reach people in terms of all the specific sort of communications points. But here are a couple of highlights. So we sent three mailers over the course of about four months. all the specific sort of communications points, uh, but here are a couple highlights. So we sent three mailers over the course of about four months to, uh, the over five thousand owners and renters in these neighborhoods, um, and I'll also note that our relatively new, uh, What's Up Wheat Ridge online platform has been really a fantastic resource for us, uh, with residents registering on that platform and giving us the ability to communicate with the six hundred or so people that signed up, uh, directly and throughout the blitz. So I'm gonna spend a moment walking through this slide here, because there's a lot to unpack, uh, but so the, the blitz report summarizes in a pretty graphics-rich format what the residents told us. I mentioned earlier that round one is a very open-ended format, uh, so from that open-ended format, these were really the topics that we heard about most in Bel Air and East Wheat Ridge. A lot to unpack within each one of these certainly, but you'll see in a moment, uh, what the action items were that residents weighed in on that tied directly to these topics, and sort of the nuanced perspectives we heard on each of these. Uh, so I'll just walk through the, each of these briefly, and we can certainly circle back and, and do a deeper dive if you'd like, but regarding development, really the common thread across both neighborhoods with some nuanced differences between them was uh, concern about, uh, you know, development that's not sensitive to each neighborhood's, um, more quote-unquote "small-town" character, which was a term we frequently heard, uh, particularly as folks compare us to surrounding Denver and the scale of development happening in neighborhoods like the Highlands. So this more small-town sort of country feel that we heard is a highly-desired neighborhood feature among what's interesting, it's a highly-desired feature among both those that have lived in the neighborhood a long time and the newcomers. Uh, and so there's a lot of nuance to this topic, and the, again, the reports, we think, capture that pretty well. Uh, regarding traffic and speeding, so each neighborhood has its hotspots, but in general, the concerns related more to uh, local residential streets and cut-through traffic, and I think Bel Air particularly, um, this was a particular hot-button issue that cut through traffic and traffic and speeding. Uh, regarding pedestrian and bicycle access and safety, uh, the concerns related back to traffic and speeding in terms of areas with sort of you combine having no sidewalks with also being cut-through streets, um, those being hot-button issues, and also the lack of connectivity um, that most of us, um, uh, may be aware of, um, and so, um, we have some plans like the Bike and Ped Master Plan that aim to address some of these pinch points. We can certainly talk about what those are in each of these neighborhoods, according to folks, so. And then regarding supporting local businesses, really the main concern we heard was not only helping them through the pandemic and those challenges, but in general, filling some vacant storefronts and fox-string, uh, Wheat Ridge businesses as an important element of neighborhood character, uh, with an emphasis, not surprisingly, for East Wheat Ridge folks on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, uh, and for Bel Air residents, an emphasis on Forty-Fourth Avenue west of Wadsworth, and that sort of little pocket of commercial there. Okay, so in round two of the blitz, we developed, uh, ten neighborhood-specific action items, uh, with a lot of overlap between the two neighborhoods, and we asked residents to weigh in on which they support most through an action survey and community meetings. Uh, so these are the ten action items and how they ranked across the two neighborhoods in terms of, uh, which ones residents would like the city to move forward on most. I'll note that, um, residents were asked for their level of support for each of these, and they all scored high, uh, in their level of support, uh, and they were then asked kind of the end of the survey to rank and prioritize them, and so this list reflects their rankings sort of combined across both neighborhoods. Uh, so I won't go through each one of them, but in your packet and each blitz report, the specifics of sort of what they mean and how we might implement them are provided, and you can also see how specifically these action items were framed to residents. So attachment one, so these next couple of slides are, are staff's recommendations for, um, action items to respond. Uh, so there, there's an attachment in your packet, attachment one, that summarizes, uh, staff's recommendation for how to address each of those ten action items you just saw on the previous slide, uh, whether that be to, uh, request funding, uh, wait and monitor how the issue tracks across other neighborhoods, or, uh, that it would need city council policy direction, for example. We also addressed how these topics align or don't align with council's, uh, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one priorities per year, uh, February twentieth retreat and that ongoing conversation. Uh, so, and, and the good news is we found that council's priorities, um, as we understand them, really line up well with what we heard from residents in these two neighborhoods. Uh, so this and the next slide highlights the recommendations staff plans to address in twenty twenty-one, and we're certainly happy to do a deeper dive on what each might look like, uh, but I'm not going to go through each one of them in the interest of time tonight. So I'll just highlight a few of them, like street improvements, um, uh, that would be part of, uh, planned budget request in twenty twenty-one for twenty twenty-two. And, uh, a few of these items, we anticipate council discussions or updates as twenty twenty-one progresses, like the, the bulk plan and addressing, um, accessory dwelling units, you'll see on the next slide. Um, so each of these items has a lot of thought and coordination across departments underneath them, so again, we're happy to sort of call out any of them for discussion if you'd like. Um, we also think the timing works really well, uh, staff is working with council in May, uh, for the citywide, uh, work plan, I think, May third, uh, scheduled meeting, and then the budget process for twenty twenty-two starts in June. And so, uh, and we also hope to have the results of the resident survey available around this time too, uh, if I have my dates right, so I have just a couple more slides on, um, sort of next neighborhoods and next steps, and then we'll, uh, we'll wrap up here. So our next neighborhoods are slated to be Applewood and Lepplamanner. And so we're happy to explain why these were chosen, but one reason evident on the map is for sort of the geographic distribution across the city and council districts. And so we're, we've already started ramping up towards these neighborhoods, um, and the blitz will slated to occur from May to September, maybe August of this year, and I'll note that we're, we're learning ways to improve how we engage with people, uh, with the first set of neighborhoods now under our belt and with warmer weather, hopefully more COVID-related flexibility to talk to people. Uh, we expect to have more and better opportunities to reach people in person. A couple of new approaches on this front will include recruiting neighborhood champions, as we're calling them, to help to get the word out and get input. Uh, we're also planning to coordinate with the newly-formed, uh, Race and Equity Task Force to utilize their expertise and input to, uh, better reach traditionally underrepresented populations. Um, and, uh, and then last, certainly, the plan is, as we go through each of the blitzes, to update council throughout and to come back to a sort of a similar update, uh, following the blitz in these two neighborhoods later this year. So our next steps are really to jump right into the next two neighborhoods starting this month, and we've already started this work with, uh, neighborhood webpages up and running. Uh, we've had an article on Wheat Ridge Connections, among many other things. We'll start by launching the round one survey that we call the Prime the Pump Survey here in the next few weeks. Uh, we'll be setting up community events and generally getting the word out about the program with targeted outreach in these neighborhoods. Um, and so that, uh, that concludes our presentation, uh, because we'd like to open it up to questions, either generally about the program or uh, about the action items we're proposing to advance in twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Hurt. Uh, why don't we take the, uh, presentation off the screen so we can see everyone, and we'll, um, open it up to, uh, questions from council. If you'd please just raise your hand, I'll, uh, I'll start calling on you. Uh, Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, thanks, Jeff. Thanks, um, Ashley. Um, so, uh, that's awesome. Um, it's really cool to see how participation didn't seem to be too impacted by, um, COVID, and I know that also has a lot to do with how much work you all put into making sure that you're reaching out to folks, I really appreciate it. Um, I want to, um, just address, uh, Chris's comments, uh, during public comment, um, and him bringing up like flag lots. Um, so I think that's a great outcome of this whole process, is that, you know, the, the issues, there were the top ten issues that, that hit that neighborhood and that area, but this also is another opportunity for us to, if we didn't capture one of those things, our residents can still be a part of the process, and so I just wanted to ask you both how those types of issues, in this case, flag lots, but anything that's not a part of the original, you know, outreach is incorporated into your report.
Yeah, so it's a good question, I'm glad we're addressing that. Um, so we took a pretty, fairly quantitative approach in terms of analyzing, you know, the several hundred open-ended comments. We went through a whole process of tagging comments based on specifically what the issue was, so. And so, uh, so I guess, long story short, uh, you know, flag lots came up a bit, but it didn't quite elevate to the level numbers-wise of some of the other issues in terms of the size and scale of residential buildings, for example. Um, but, I mean, the good news is, and what we've tried to communicate with folks in these neighborhoods is just because the blitz is over doesn't mean the dialogue has to stop. Um, but this particular issue, this flag lot issue, um, you know, is the, um, not something that came up, um, in our resident conversations, uh, up until recently. Um, and it didn't come up as much in the survey, uh, data-wise, um, but I mean, we're certainly always open to different strategies to address some of these sort of neighborhood compatibility issues, but, um, but I guess, long story short, it wasn't quite on that level, looking kind of as you aggregate all the feedback across uh, all of Bel Air residents to, uh, kind of raise to that top, top level, and I don't know if Ashley, you have anything else to add there?
Yeah, I just want to mention that all the details are in the appendix at the end of each report, and so you can find the notes from the conversation that we had with Chris and his neighbors in there, and all of the, um, open-ended survey responses as well.
Okay, that's, um, I'm so sorry, just, um, so I guess the, the thing that I'd like to make really clear to residents, too, is that this is one way that we're engaging with residents, but also like if there are issues with flag lots, and you need to talk about those, there's other ways to also, you know, work with council and all of us, it's, this isn't the only avenue, so we can still have those conversations about flag lots, even if it's not in that list of top ten. Right?
Yeah, and that's a, that's a great comment, and I think, like, you know, we had a meeting last week where this came up, and I think it, it, it was successful in the sense of, um, it, it, you know, we made folks aware that, you know, the conversation didn't have to stop here, and that you know, folks could always come to council to, um, kind of share their opinions on specific issues, and I like to think that's the result of, uh, you know, Chris being here tonight was knowing and having that conversation last week that there is an outlet and a portal. Um, and so we were able to use that conversation to, not to talk too much about this, but to have a, a pretty detailed conversation about how flag lots work and kind of their history and their evolution, um, and so while we don't have a specific action item laid out for it, it was, um, helpful, and I think a, a positive outcome to have had that conversation through this portal.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Weaver, and then Ms. Holteen.
Um, I, I don't want to belabor the conversation about, about flag lots, but it, it's something that, that has come up over the last few years in Planning Commission, and I was just kind of curious, um, Ken, if you could speak to sort of how we can, because the one thing I learned in, in Planning Commission was that the flag lots are so individual, and it's this issue of legacy Wheat Ridge and allowing access to these inner parcels. And I'm just kind of curious, how might council, because we're not necessarily to liaison with Planning Commission, how might we think about flag lots generally, when, at least in my experience, they were all very, very unique? And I, I just was wondering, Ken, if, if you had any thoughts on, on how to think about flag lots as a body with council versus sort of looking at the specifics in a situation in Planning Commission? Does that, does that make sense as a question? Sorry.
Uh, sure, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a relatively simple issue, but, uh, with some complicated layers as well, I guess the, the first comment that I would make is that the, the way the city lays out, kind of parcel-wise, there are actually, you know, many situations that come up where you have a property that's oversized relative to the minimum lot size for the applicable zoning district, uh, and is also, at the same time, very deep, so from a pure physical, um, perspective, there are, you know, many instances where it, you know, uh, the, the potential for a flag lot exists. Uh, and, and so, you know, I think perhaps because of that, uh, our zoning code anticipates that they may be allowed. From a procedural standpoint, uh, you know, just to give a little bit of history, you know, we, we last comprehensively updated our uh, subdivision regulations, which is Article Four of the zoning code, and, correct me if I'm wrong here, Jeff, but, uh, two thousand fourteen?
Yep.
And, and it was a, a repeal and reenactment, and the, that didn't deal specifically with flag lots. Um, what it did do was make some minor adjustments to what was eligible for administrative review and approval. Uh, so currently, based on that, uh, code amendment that was adopted by council in that year, twenty fourteen, uh, up to three-lot subdivisions can be approved administratively. Uh, and those certainly can, uh, in some cases include, you know, flag lots. Uh, so that kind of procedurally is where we stand. Um, larger subdivisions, um, four and five lots in, uh, require Planning Commission review, and larger than that, or under certain other circumstances, require city council approval. So there's certainly the possibility that, you know, flag lot subdivisions, if you will, uh, can be approved administratively or by the Planning Commission without coming to city council. Um, because the, the, the topic had come up, um, from certain members of the community and, and the Planning Commission as well, uh, it was a topic of discussion more recently. Uh, and there was discussion by council whether to modify the regulations pertaining to flag lots, and ultimately, uh, council chose not to take action in that regard. Um, and so that, that could have, you know, been up to and including not allowing flag lots, or uh, it had also been suggested, uh, consideration that you could, uh, require a different approval process for a subdivision containing a flag lot, such as it would automatically triver, trigger either Planning Commission or Planning Commission and City Council review. And again, uh, city council, uh, in considering those options, chose not to make those modifications, so that's kind of the lay of the land, if you will, uh, in terms of what's allowed and isn't allowed, what the process is, and kind of where we've been, uh, from a historical perspective in, in considering the issue.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Uh, thank you. Ms. Holteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd like to just start by, uh, thanking Jeff and, and Ashley for all their work on this, as, uh, I participated, uh, mostly listening, but sometimes as a neighbor participated, and the conversations that neighbors had in the small groups were, I think, really, really rich, and, you know, the, the goal of the NRS when this recommendation came forward was was the listening and engagement part, and to that end, I think that this is just highly successful first round, and, uh, it's exciting to see what's gonna happen in the next round. Um, I do have a couple of questions. The first one is, is really just seeking a clarification, um, that it seems like s- some of the data that's come out of this and recommendations um, kind of like range from the neighborhood or, or neighborhood district level, like up to city-wide level. So can you provide a little clarification, like we're seeing specific recommendations around improving bike head access on, uh, in safety on Thirty-Fifth Avenue, which is like very specific to that neighborhood, against a recommendation for increased funding for the, uh, Neighborhood Traffic Management Program? So can you just give a little clarification about how you're balancing, like, recommendations at the neighborhood-specific level versus, uh, recommendations that would, in effect, come out of a neighborhood but benefit the city at, as a whole, and then I have a second question.
Yeah, that, that's a fantastic question, and we've thought about that certainly, so, um, so I guess the, the, the short answer is that, um, the, the action items we're looking to move forward, we, we've evaluated them as, in our opinion, having a potential citywide benefit without a, being a neighborhood-specific issue, so the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, for example, uh, we see as having a citywide benefit, you know, dumpster and cleanup days, the same, um, improving communications on development projects, the same. Uh, a lot of those line up to, in our opinion, having a lot of pros and not many cons in terms of applying it across other neighborhoods. Uh, we could have a discussion about the bulk plan and ADUs, and I think that'll evolve, but, uh, setting your specific example of Thirty-Fifth Avenue. Um, so, uh, in that case, and I think i- it may be the case going forward, um, that specific, you know, segment of road, um, and I think it would apply to other similar type of recommendations, has solid, um, before we started talking to people, already had kind of solid backing being in, uh, the, the council adopted Bike and Ped Master Plan from whatever year that was, two thousand sixteen, relatively recent. So it had already sort of been prioritized, and then in talking to our engineers internally, um, we all sort of like nodded our heads, like, yeah, that one's kind of overdue, um, specifically. It's not just because these neighborhoods happened to bring it up at this moment, we've been thinking about that one for years, so that one, it seemed like it elevated to a point where, um, while it is neighborhood-specific, um, it's been on our radar a lo- a long time, and we could talk more about that specific one too, in terms of how it connects with Denver's Neighborhood Bike Way across Sheridan and things of that nature, so. Um, so it's a balance, um, but I, I guess in our, the staff opinions, um, the ones we're looking to move forward on either have already sort of clear plan guidance, policy guidance, or we see a lot of citywide, um, benefits from moving forward. And then you had a second question, or if, if that answers your question, if you want to.
Yeah, I think it does. I wa- I just wasn't sure, um, like if we're seeing that increase in budget for the neighborhood, uh, traffic management, if that would be specific to the neighborhoods who identified it as a priority, if those funds would be, uh, made available citywide.
I'll maybe answer that one, Jeff. Um, thanks for the question, Ms. Hulteen. You know, I, I think we've seen an uptick in interest in the NTMP, uh, over the last several years as well, separate from this engagement. I think this engagement process just heightened our awareness of that. So we have kind of an ongoing queue of neighborhoods or, or smaller geographies that are, uh, having those discussions. And there are several potential, uh, NA- NTMP, you know, projects that are in the hopper. Again, as we've noted, uh, it's, it will definitely be a budget discussion for this upcoming, you know, budget cycle. So the timing's good. So I, so I would say, well, it's come up in these two neighborhoods specifically that it would not be, you know, our recommendation that, that we just, you know, designate the funds to these neighborhoods, that we just kind of keep the program moving forward as it has and, and keep processing the, the requests kind of as we have in the past, which is, you know, taking them in order. And just having, if, you know, council so approves, just having more resources to both to staff it and then to, you know, have a line item in the capital improvement budget to be able to, you know, fund a certain number of these projects in any given year. So I don't think we'll propose to limit the geography, uh, based on where we started, which is in the East Wheat Ridge and, and Bel Air neighborhoods. So I would say that there, there are definitely projects in the hopper, um, I think in the Bel Air neighborhood and also in East Wheat Ridge. So, so there is that alignment as well.
Thank you, Ken. That's, that's helpful. Uh, just a last comment on that. And my other quick question is, um, you know, I, you know, I'm, I'm glad we have the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan. Um, I think, uh, there's some efficacy issues with it in terms of how, you know, we're studying one block and how addressing that block creates problems on the adjacent block. And it's a reactive and not proactive program. So, uh, won't go any further here, but, uh, if we are looking at increasing that budget, um, I would like to, uh, propose at some point that we actually take a study and review the program itself and consider, uh, proactive elements to it. So that we're actually systematically addressing some of the issues. My other question is, having sat in on a lot of these and, um, paid attention to a lot of the, the discussions, I mean, almost every meeting I was in, um, the majority of people were very interested in citywide trash collection. And I did not see that come through. And I'm just curious, um, what happened to that? Because it was a hot item in, I think, four or five of the, the things I sat in on.
Yeah, we heard, so we heard about that one, um, in the round one survey. And we kind of ran the numbers, so to speak, on the number of comments, and it wasn't quite at the top tier. And so, well, maybe to back up, our process for kind of how we vetted this topic, these topics were, you know, we did, we did the, the round one survey and we analyzed the data. And then the, the resident conversations were sort of subsequent to that, uh, survey where we said, here's what we're hearing so far. Here are the key topics, trash being one of them that was up there. So I, maybe ten, fifteen topics. And so we basically asked folks, um, whether it was ten or twenty or thirty people, uh, in the conversation, is this the right list? Are these the most important things to you? What should come off? What should be added? And through those conversations, um, it was a bit of a culling that happened. And, um, not to say that trash is not a hot button issue, certainly, uh, it is. And we know what's going on in Norvada. But, um, didn't quite, um, get there in terms of, um, a- as we vetted these things. So, but again, not to say it's not an issue and, and we shouldn't move forward on it. And that's just the end of the conversation, but, um, our kind of analysis didn't, didn't yield that result at least.
Great. Thank you. That's really helpful.
Uh, thank you very much. Additional questions or comments from council? Please raise your hand. Uh, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and thank you, Jeff, for all your hard work on this. Appreciate, uh, especially all everybody's work on reaching out to so many residents. Um, you touched on it briefly regarding the strategic, uh, plan and the retreat that we had and the results that came out of that and how that intersects with this. And, uh, I haven't seen really any sort of comparison to see how those intersect. Is that planned in the future? Or how do we compare what we're doing here to what we did at the retreat?
Yeah, so, um, in your packet, and there's a lot in there, um, the, the, uh, the ten action items that we have laid out, we've got kind of a, a line item that, that looks at how they do or don't align with your priorities as we understand them currently. And I know it's evolving a bit, but, um, so we, we did that, that, a bit of that analysis, um, that is a bit buried in your packet. So, for example, you know, we know that moving forward with bulk plan or expanding bulk more residential areas was a high priority. And so we noted that. And, um, and I'm trying to think of some other examples, but, um, that was a part, that was a part of our thinking. And, and, and part of our formulating these action items, um, to bring before you tonight was how they do or don't align with, um, what we heard from council back in February.
Yeah, I would just add, just cherry picking a couple, um, additional items, uh, Mr. Urban would be Thirty-Eighth Avenue Streetscape, was a priority, uh, in both of these processes, your, your city council process and our Let's Talk, uh, process. And further in the discussion on ADUs was another one that's, you know, a council priority, uh, and also a- aligned with what we were hearing at the, at the Let's Talk level.
Then maybe an example that, that doesn't align is the improved thirty, Thirty-Fifth Avenue for walking and bike bicycling. That did not come up as a high priority during the council retreat, but it did during the, uh, Let's Talk program.
So I guess kind of, uh, moving forward, how do we marry those two sort of, I don't want to call them disparate paths, but, uh, how do we manage a priority, um, listless compared to the priorities that we developed through the strategic process?
Yeah, I think that's a, a great question, Mr. Urban. It's, I think it's based on, uh, capacity. Obviously, council gave us a, a, uh, marching orders on eight different priorities at the council retreat. Um, and then s- some from Let's Talk align and some don't. So, um, I think we're going to have to ask staff when we bring back, as Jeff mentioned, um, we're coming back to council in May with, um, uh, some traffic work, work plans for your council priorities. Um, I think we'll, we'll look at how these fit into that and how much other, other, other items that came out of Let's Talk that did not come up in the council priorities, how many of those we can, we can add to our work plate, um, uh, for the next couple of years. Um, and in the end, I guess it's up to you and, and the rest of council to decide what's a higher priority. If, if things, if there's con- conflicting, um, priorities and we don't have the capacity to do both.
And I guess one last, uh, sort of concern I have relative to taking action. And, uh, I, I think we, we should be listening to the residents and we should be taking action on what they say is a priority. But I'm curious, as we look at other parts of the city and their thoughts on priorities and, and how that looks as we begin to sort of take action on these specific projects and other neighborhoods say that no, that's not a priority for us. You know, what's the detriment of waiting until those other neighborhoods are surveyed before we take these or commit to taking these, uh, to action?
Yeah, I, I think I just maybe piggyback on Patrick's comments. I mean, I think it's just a can, you know, an ongoing balancing act. You know, some of these issues that come up that may be, you know, more neighborhood oriented or, or a focus of one neighborhood versus another neighborhood, you know, to some extent, they can be tackled on a neighborhood scale. And we don't need to understand fully what the rest of the city feels on that through this, uh, rollout of the Let's Talk program. So, uh, that's one aspect. And then, so I, I think there are things that we can continue to pick off. I mean, I think we've used the phrase, maybe overused it, but that we want to be able to, you know, walk and chew gum and be able to accomplish some of the things, both on your strategic plan for certain, uh, as well as the, the issues that we're hearing through this program. And some of those will, will make sense to do before we hear from other neighborhoods. And some may, you know, be better off to wait and see if there's more of a, a larger consensus on that topic because it's a topic that really, uh, should be tackled on a larger scale. So I think we'll just continue to evaluate those. And as Patrick alluded, I mean, I think it, you know, ultimately, you know, both the, the list from city council and the list from this program, some of those are, uh, low-hanging fruit and we can, we can knock them off sooner than later. And some of them are bigger left and we'll have to kind of queue them up in the list of priorities to make sure that we have the, the resources, whether it be staff or, you know, capital funding to be able to, to knock them off, um, in a systematic way over time.
Thank you.
And I know that we've been, um, I know we're having conversations internally about your, the very question of how do we marry council's priorities with this program's priorities. So specifically, for example, the communications piece. I know that was one of the highest council priorities in terms of sort of resident engagement in terms of, so the way we framed it, it was, it was very development-focused. Um, I think council's, uh, lens on that is a little bit broader. So we're having those types of conversations to figure out, um, how to align these two worlds. But, uh, but yeah, it's, it's definitely going to be ongoing and we'll, we'll stay flexible with the program.
Thank you. Uh, I have Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to, uh, Jeff and Ashley and Ken for all of your hard work on this. I really appreciate these types of reports. I read every page, every single comment on every page, um, for East Wheat Ridge because it helps us, it gives us data points and it gives us a roadmap of, you know, where, where are we going down the road for our community? What is it that's important to them? And so I appreciate all the work you put into this. And, um, I really appreciated a lot of the, um, a lot of the things that I heard from the report. I mostly appreciate our residents for sharing their time with us to, um, to give us this information. So, thank you very much.
Uh, thank you. Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo, uh, Ms. Hoppy's gratitude for our residents. I'm kind of laughing because, uh, I was not on council, uh, probably about six or seven years ago when council approved funding for Thirty-Fifth Avenue. So, um, so it'll be nice to actually see it happen. I am, I'm excited to see that. Uh, to, to Mr. Urban's point, um, having been in a lot of the conversations and done the surveys myself, um, as a resident, as well as to, you know, observe as a, as a representative, um, I think it's important when we're communicating with our residents that the information is both to understand at the neighborhood level, what the residents of those neighborhoods feel and to communicate that some of this stuff is being considered citywide versus understanding what's specific to their neighborhood so that there isn't confusion or frustration, um, moving forward. So I think maybe, uh, just clarifying a little bit better in the communications that some of these topics are topics that are going to, um, be really considered at a city level, um, for, for policy or for funding, as opposed to specific areas of concerns or, or projects or overlay district-type ideas that would be specific to the neighborhood, just so that that, um, understanding is consistent with, with the residents. And then, uh, something that didn't come through too strongly and, uh, i- it, this is a firehose data year between this and the survey and all of the great online input we're getting through other mechanisms, like, uh, to Ms. Hoppy's point, we have a lot of great input. But I think, you know, parks are really important in the neighborhoods. And, um, I don't really remember like that much, um, sort of like opportunity or specific questions about relationships to parks. Um, so I don't know if that's something that's been considered that could be incorporated. I know we're doing a master plan update this year, um, but, uh, that's just, just a suggestion. And other than that, um, yeah, they, I just, like Ms. Hoppy, I read every, every page. And, um, I really appreciate, uh, since both of these were, were in District Two, as well as the upcoming round two, we'll round out round two or District Two. So I really appreciate all the data. It really helps a lot. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And Jeff and Ashley, uh, thank you guys for all your hard work. Ms. Hulteen and I were on the NRS and, and, uh, kind of helped launch this. But, um, I just had a question as far as the, um, the engagement piece of it. How, how do you guys feel you guys did as far as your numbers on engagement in the, in the neighborhoods? Did, did you have certain targets you were trying to hit? Or was it just kind of, let's put it all out there, see what happens? Uh, how systematic were you as far as that goes? And, and I guess with the second part of that question is what, what worked really well? I know the Prime the Pump survey kind of worked pretty well, but what, what else worked really well in getting people out and into the conversations?
Yeah, I, I can, Ashley, you unmuted yourself. You're, you have more expertise on this subject if you want to chime in. I'm happy to as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Jump in if I forget anything. To the second part of your question of what worked really well, we sent several postcards to every household, as Jeff mentioned in the presentation. And that got us a lot of people who ta- who took that first Prime the Pump survey. And with taking the survey, we were able to have them register on WhatsApp Wheat Ridge, which is an incredible tool. So having all of that, having people's contact information early on and having follow-up conversations of, now, please join us for a virtual meeting if you can. You can do an on-demand meeting. If you can't make the regularly scheduled virtual meetings, please take this second survey. We really got a great group of people from the postcards. So we had two postcards go out before the first survey and then a third postcard in between rounds one and two. So those were really helpful. And also we had yard signs around the neighborhood at the public parks. We also gave yard signs to individuals to put in their yards. And it had a QR code that took people directly to the website to take the survey. And we had a lot of people who came to meetings and took the survey, mentioned, oh, you know, I was at, you know, I was at so-and-so park and I saw this yard sign and that's how I got involved. So we really tried to get to people in a lot of different ways. I think the variety was key in engagement. And we, social media, doing some things on Nextdoor, which makes it really easy to target individual neighborhoods. We kind of really tried to, to get to people as many ways as possible.
Yeah, thanks. And, and one, one quick point on the Nextdoor thing is we were deliberate in aligning, uh, the program neighborhoods with Nextdoor neighborhoods to the extent possible. So, um, so I don't know how much folks know about how Nextdoor works. I'm still learning, but you really can, as Ashley said, say, we just want to do a blast to folks in this neighborhood. And you get a lot of good data in terms of open rates, um, and things like that. So it's a very, very tailored approach. Um, and having that, the, all those folks registered on WhatsApp Wheat Ridge is a super powerful tool, um, to have a, really just a built-in database. Going forward, you know, with the weather being warmer and restrictions, pandemic restrictions loosening up, the meetings-on-demand kind of approach that we did a bit for the first set of neighborhoods, which is basically, you know, you schedule a couple of meetings, um, at different times, one in the evening and one on a Saturday. And, and say, you know, if you can't make it, folks, just let us know. If you want to organize a group, we'll come to you. People were really receptive to that and we're hopeful that, um, and our thought was, our vision before the pandemic started was, you know, these could be informal gatherings of folks that are already gathering, you know, in the evenings on their block, at the local park and somebody's driveway. And we could just pop in to where you already are, um, and get your input that way. We got some pretty good success that way through virtual meetings in the first go-round, but we're hopeful that we, with the weather, we can, uh, beef that up a bit. So, but we're always open to ideas. And we're going to go to the Rising Equity Task Force and get their ideas and always open to ideas for how to improve and do better.
I think adding the, the block champions or the neighborhood champions, I think that's a great idea because that's going to help kind of build an army. And I think that was part of what the engagement tour was supposed to do, was kind of help build some infrastructure for us to communicate better with the residents in the first place. So if we have some, some neighborhood champions that can, can go door-to-door real quickly and, and give out twenty flyers or something. So it's not something that's all dependent on staff. I think that's good. So, great. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Hutchinson, and then Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for all this information. I just have a question regarding, um, walking and chewing gum at the same time. So we're going to be working on Wadsworth Boulevard. And so then the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Streetscape. How would that kind of go together, like as far as, you know, traffic and, um, how that affects like Wadsworth already is going to affect neighborhoods, I think. So then you're going to do Thirty-Eighth Streetscape could be about, well, at the same time, if it comes up. And I, I'm just wondering how that would kind of work out.
Yeah, it's a good question, Ms. Hutchinson. Um, certainly, you know, Wadsworth is moving forward. Yeah, it's a good question, Ms. Hutchinson. Um, certainly, you know, Wadsworth is moving forward on a on a quick timeframe in terms of you know, about to be out to bid and uh under construction. Uh, we anticipate yet this summer. Uh, and we're already thinking, you know, real hard and I've I've had some some neighborhood engagement uh about what it's gonna look like in terms of local traffic mitigation, in terms of managing those those impacts during construction. So uh, we'll definitely be, continue to be very mindful of that. Uh, in terms of Thirty-Eighth Avenue, which, you know, the there's there's really we still need to dive a little deeper, I think, with city council to understand what your priorities are there. I think there there may be priorities both for the eastern portion between, you know, Wadsworth and Sheridan and also the the western portion between uh Kipling and Youngfield, at least that's my sense. Um, and those are both, you know, pretty major capital construction projects that will, you know, most likely be a little further down the road uh in terms of uh identifying funding sources for those. Uh, and in the case of uh the section from Kipling to Youngfield, you know, we we haven't even begun any sort of a design process, which would be, you know, fairly um lengthy and somewhat complicated. Um, just because there's a lot of drainage issues around that. But I think in the shorter term or nearer term, you know, we do have money in the capital budget for uh the the reconstruction of the green in partnership with uh the school district. And that that would be kind of a a maybe a a next logical first phase of streetscape improvements on the eastern portion of Thirty-Eighth Avenue uh that would be ju- done in conjunction with uh that park. And I think that would have relatively minimal impacts on the actual functionality of the street during construction because it'll mostly be uh improvements that would be done behind the curve. But but definitely we'll need to be mindful of kind of the cumulative impacts of, you know, various uh street reconstruction projects and how those impact traffic on those streets as well as impact tra- traffic in in neighborhoods that surround them.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I also wanted to echo the a thanks for all of the hard work. Um, I really appreciate all of the information um and and the way it was outlined was very clear and concise. Um, I do want to just comment that I hope the city moves forward with um some sort of virtual platform. Um, I think continuing that would allow for more people to participate. I know um I prefer to be in person um because, you know, I I'm an extrovert, but at the same time it allows uh for convenience to to kind of plug in virtually. And so you know, for any working parents that can kind of tune in and and listen um while they're at home, I think that would be beneficial for our community. Um, and then I did want to ask um uh Jeff and Ashley if you've had any members of the community reach out and um express that they felt like their voices weren't heard, um, they weren't uh a part of the process and how they were brought into the fold because I have already had people reach out um who who are uh disenchanted with the whole process. And I, you know, I I think there's a lot of um distrust um that that's underlying in in that realm. And I think people kind of felt like there was just a a preconceived outcome. Um, and and so they're they're worried about that. And I just kind of wanted to see how you guys have been addressing that or how you would address that if um more more folks come out of the woodworks.
Yeah, I mean, we we um, you know, honestly, didn't hear too many people come to us and say, you know, we felt left out or um, you know, didn't get a chance to get involved. Um, we we certainly did our best with the early stages of this blitz to make it clear to folks that we're not co- I mean, this is one of our main talking points was, we're not coming at you with any preconceived ideas of what the issues are. We want this to be as resident-driven as possible. Um, and we were kind of repeated that over and over. Um, but I mean, I think the reality is uh when you're, you know, we mailed this, we did a mailer to five thousand plus households and six hundred plus folks. Um, the reality is, I mean, certainly, we're not going to be able to address everyone's um issue um a- as we all know, of course. Um, but our approach was really more about um trying to clarify that it's it's really open-ended, like we really truly are keeping this open-ended um and making it a lot of it a um both qualitative and quantitative. So giving folks that space to just tell us what's on their mind um and 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 tying data to what people told us just to have. Uh, so it's not subjective in the sense of us reviewing a few pages of comments and saying, oh, that's what their hot-button issue is. It's quantified. Um, and and that's all kind of put in those reports. But um, you know, in terms of the the example of the flag lots, for example, and those folks, um, that's one example um where, you know, people may, um, and that's part of what the, one of the goals of this program is to help build trust. So people see that we're listening and it's open-ended and that we are um taking action and being responsive. We're not just sitting on this information. Um, and so I think this is the first round of neighborhoods and as we get into the next set, um, hopefully, we build that trust a little bit more. So folks see that um we genuinely do want to hear from you. Um, but I mean, the reality is, uh, I think that we'll always hear from folks that um that, you know, felt like they um didn't have a say. Um, I don't know, Ashley, do you have anything else to add on that front?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that one of the things that we're doing to to try and help with that is closing the loop after each blitz. So sending out these blitz reports with all of the information to see, you know, this is what your neighbors had to say. Take a look. Um, we got all of this great feedback. We had these many people join us and and that kind of information. I think people really like to hear that and be able to read the story of great, we started with this survey, we narrowed it down to these topics for these reasons, and then, you know, can kind of continue from there. And um this last email giving people the blitz report will not be the last that they hear from us. And I think that's part of building trust as well. Checking back in and saying, hey, here's we, here's where we are with these different projects that we we mentioned that we were taking to council and here's what we're doing now and here's what's gonna be, you know, pushed to later and it's pushed for these reasons. So really just continuing like the communication.
Thank you. Any additional questions from council? Jeff, I had one and I want to thank you and Ashley for preparing this report. Some great information and great data points. And I think we've got a a lot of good direction. One thing that I I I sort of uh had a question on, and maybe it's not an not an issue, but we have ten neighborhoods and you've done the first two and we've got sort of action plans. And uh, you know, sort of my metaphor is going to be a juggler. So we've got two neighborhoods and two balls in the air. Uh, we're gonna start uh with two more neighborhoods with the two more balls in the air. So we're gonna have more balls in the air and then the action items that we have on the first neighborhoods are going to add some more complexity to the to the to the program. And a year from now, we're going to add two more neighborhoods to the, you know, to the program. Uh, do we have sort of a framework that will that will be able to provide um closure to the action items so that so the residents eh eh the early the early neighborhoods, uh, you know, will sort of be extending on, but we're adding new work to them and we'll be able to have the resources to sort of bring closure and and not let expectations get uh far outpace our capacity to address them.
Yeah, that's a fantastic comment, uh, Mr. Mayor. So um, the short answer is, we're working on it in terms of a master. Our thought is to have a sort of a master program, almost dashboard approach that spans all neighborhoods to date in terms of what we're working on. And it gets sort of updated each each through each day. So you don't have you don't have uh, you don't have ten action plans that you're juggling. You have really one action plan that um that evolves and changes each time you go through each of the neighborhoods and builds off of each other. So we've certainly thought about that and and how many balls up in the air where we potentially could be creating for ourselves. And our hope, our, you know, we had, uh, we're we're not quite there yet in terms of looking at the first two neighborhoods and creating that sort of master framework. But our expectation is, as we get into these, you know, neighborhoods three and four, that we're gonna evolve toward that approach where it becomes more concise and more kind of digestible um and manageable.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I don't have any more uh, any more hands up from council. So if uh if I don't see any more questions, I want to thank uh thank Jeff and Ashley for bringing this report and Ken and your team. You've done a great job. We appreciate this. And uh, and and really look forward to having uh, having more discussions and more more opportunities to sort of interface with our neighbors. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will um, we will go then to our uh item, gen- item number two, and this is a re- review of the noise ordinance. And uh, Mr. Goff, I will uh, oh, Ms. Hoppy.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wonder if maybe we can take a quick break before we crack this one open. I think it's gonna be um long.
Okay, uh, uh, ten minutes to do it. Let's come back at um at eight o'clock. We'll see you here. Um. I believe we've got about everybody back in play. And we're about to, uh, about to have a discussion on agenda item number two. This is a review of our noise ordinance. And, uh, let's see, we have Ms. Nosterbeck, Ms. Weaver should be joining us momentarily. And, uh, Mr. Goff, I'm going to, um, turn the floor over to you to decide them.
Get started?
Please.
All right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I won't go into too much of the history on the, on the noise ordinance. Um, in Wheat Ridge, we've been, um, tinkering with this for quite some time, um, at least all the way back to two thousand and five, um, and made some amendments since then. Um, but unfortunately, there's really not a best practice for regulating noise across the country. Um, every municipality, um, does it a little different. Um, but in about a year and a half ago, September of two thousand and nineteen, we did get direction from city council to, um, draft a, uh, a hybrid approach to, uh, noise ordinance in Wheat Ridge and enforcement. Um, hybrid in the sense that for industrial zone properties, um, there would be a more objective measurement using a decibel reader and unset decibel levels. And we've done that. And, um, and then the rest of the city was, would basically be more subjective under a reasonableness standard. Um, however, we did add another layer on with the permit process for outdoor amplified music, um, which you heard about this evening and or not music, noise amplified sound, actually, I think, is the, the terminology in the, in the ordinance. Um, and we limited that to six, uh, permits per location per twelve-month period. And, um, we've heard, uh, at least council members Dozeman and Nasser Beck, um, were contacted, um, I think by businesses and residents. And, uh, they requested to bring this back to a study session to talk about specifically the, um, the permit process. So I'd like to turn it over. Well, first, before I turn it over, um, we did, we did, um, lay out some, uh, proposed recommendations that city council can consider this evening. Um, and, um, also, before I get into those, we did a, this time we did a survey as was, uh, mentioned in the, in the citizen comments. And Ally and her team, um, put a survey out using our WhatsApp Wheat Ridge platform. And, um, maybe I'll let her speak to the survey, but we got quite a few results or, um, responses and, um, some good information from across the city. Um, and then also, as I mentioned, we put together, um, some recommendations that city council consider. Um, basically, um, doing nothing, um, and leaving the ordinance the way it is. Um, or, uh, amending the ordinance to increase the number of allowed outdoor sound events, um, from six to some other number. Um, we could amend the ordinance to eliminate the per- permit process for sound events and either rely on a reasonable standard, um, or set a maximum decimal level, um, in those zone districts. And I think we have one more. Or, um, another option is to look at a special use permit process, um, and either re- require a special use permits process or permit for business for any number of outdoor sound events in a twelve-month period or for a certain number, um, or a certain number above, uh, maybe a, a floor. Say, um, a business can, um, have six a year. If they want to have more than six, they have to go through a special use process. Um, and a special use permit, um, is, is unique because it, 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 um, provides more, um, discretion for city council to, um, put specific requirements in place, um, based on the location of the business and, and maybe what neighborhood it's adjacent to. So there's some flexibility there that council may have, um, to, uh, to regulate these differently depending on where they are located in the city. So we can talk through those individually, but, um, Ally, did you want to talk about the survey real quick on, on your, um, how you put that survey out?
Uh, sure. Thank you, Mr. Goff. Um, as, uh, we, we sort of detailed in the staff report, um, we, we did, we were thrilled with the response. We got a hundred and ninety-nine responses to our, our survey through WhatsApp Wheat Ridge. We did this quite quickly because I know that, um, council members Dozeman and Alzabak wanted to have this conversation sooner rather than later. So we wanted to do our best to just get a little bit more feedback from the community. Um, the speaker who called earlier and mentioned that, you know, this is not, um, the responses were not validated is a hundred percent correct. This is not a statistically valid survey. You're all familiar with what that is through our resident survey process. That this is not that. This was a, um, an opportunity to gauge again, community sentiment with the idea to bring forward to you all just a bit more information, um, and give some, you know, others in the community a chance to weigh in. I will say though, that the, the tool that we're using, that WhatsApp Wheat Ridge is really powerful in that the, the Let's Talk project, the Improve Wads project, the, the other projects we have going on allow people to register. And then what we can do is we can, we can email out through the system back to those registrants. And so the biggest, um, response group that we got were, we, we sent an email through WhatsApp Wheat Ridge to already registered participants, mostly the Let's Talk participants, actually. And that's what yielded the highest response. So I feel pretty good. Like, yes, there might be some folks in here that, um, claim to be a resident and aren't or claim to be a business owner and aren't or, but I, I have to say that that email alone generated eighty-one responses. And those are folks that have already subscribed to projects and participated. So while it's not statistically valid, um, I hope you feel that there's some good information here, um, about, you know, perhaps what some, some neighbors generally feel in Wheat Ridge. So we promoted it quite broadly through our usual channels. Um, we, uh, Maz Matters, um, our website. We do have a, uh, email subscription feature happening in Wheat Ridge that, that yielded some good responses. Social media is never, um, we, we always share, of course. We use all the tools in our tool belt. Um, and then WhatsApp Wheat Ridge was, was again, one of the, one of the most successful. Um, I'm obviously here and happy to answer any questions you have about the survey, but you've, you've all got the data in front of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Ally. Um, Mr. Mayor, I, I think we could turn it over to council members Dozeman and Nasser Beck, if you'd like.
Um, okay.
This to the study session this evening to see if they have any introductory remarks.
Terrific. Uh, Ms. Dozeman and Ms. Nussler Beck, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I'll go ahead and just, uh, speak first. Um, we have obviously been trying to address a noise ordinance, um, since before I was on council. It was one of the very first topics that we discussed, um, after I was seated. We had been having this issue, this ongoing issue for many years, um, now, uh, probably the better part of a decade at this point. Um, and I think with a lot of things, um, you know, we understood that progress didn't necessarily mean perfection. And we wanted to move forward with something that we thought was amenable to the community. Um, we had to take into consideration many stakeholders, residents, businesses, um, and, um, consumers within our community. And I think, um, I have a couple of questions for staff that, that I'll address. But really, um, we had some residents, um, and, and one business in particular, um, uh, reach out. And then, um, I did a little bit of, um, discussing this issue with other businesses that have amplified sound events, um, and got some feedback from business owners that use this method, method and, um, for, you know, to, to seek revenue, um, within our community and, and also kind of stake a name for themselves. Um, so I, we wanted to bring it forward just to ha- open up, um, the issue for a little more discussion and kind of see where council members are at and revisit and see if we got it right the first time or if there might need to be some revisions made.
Thank you, Ms. Nussler Beck.
Thanks. Um, and just to piggyback on what, um, Leah said, um, so, uh, I, when we first, um, passed this noise ordinance, um, it was newer on council. And, um, now, since we've passed the ordinance, have, um, have a lot more information, um, since, um, we've passed that original noise ordinance where I've heard from a lot more residents, um, putting the noise ordinance out there, um, and seeing how it's impacted businesses, how it's impacted residents, both positively and negatively. Um, you know, we, at least I can speak for both Leah and myself, um, because we've been hearing from a lot of constituents about this, um, that it was just, it just seemed really necessary for us to bring this back. Um, and, and even when we passed this originally, um, we said that we were most likely going to come back and, and revisit and see how things were going. Um, and so this is just us doing that. Um, a couple of things, um, that I'm, I'm really hopeful we can address in addition to the permitting, um, this evening is, um, looking at, um, how we rolled out the initial noise ordinance and if there's a possibility for us to, um, reengage and re-roll out the noise ordinance with our business owners and our residents. And, um, also, you know, work with Chief Murtha to make sure that, um, everybody's on the same page as to what the ordinance, um, does. There seemed to be a lot of confusion in the initial rollout. And so that's one of the things that I hope we can, um, address, um, tonight. And then also, um, if we can, um, this is, this has been really one of the toughest parts of the whole conversation, but is getting down to how we, outside of the industrial, um, businesses, how we measure and what we consider reasonable and unreasonable and just have that conversation, um, to decide if that's, if we want to measure that or if we just want to go with the permitting process. But I just think it's important for us to, to talk about that. So I just, um, wanted to bring up a couple of those things that I hope we can discuss tonight, too. Um, thanks to everybody also that, um, came and spoke and gave public comment, um, at the earlier part of the meeting tonight.
Uh, thank you. I had a, uh, comment to hand from Ms. Hoppe.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, so for me tonight, the goal would be for us to have some sort of direction on, um, where we're going with the permit process. I would prefer that we don't touch the industrial zoning, um, and also the study sessions that we had in the past. In those, in those informational, um, packets, there, there was information about what our communities around us are, do and how they're doing it and a, a lot more information about that than what we have in this packet tonight. And I think that's because the direction was that we were going to be looking at the permit process for the amplified sound events. So if we're going to go and dig into the entire thing again, then, um, I'd like to say timeout. We don't have all of the information sitting in front of us. And I'm, I'm unwilling to have that conversation until everybody has done that research and that study piece. I am, however, willing to have the conversation with the special use permit process, um, because that's the information that we have laid out in front of us tonight. So I just kind of want to put that out there that if that's, if that's what we want to talk about that piece, then I think we have all the information we need for that. If we're going to dig into other pieces, then, um, I think that we need the other pieces of information for it.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you. Yeah. So I would, I would agree that the, the main points that we wanted to address tonight, um, are the permit process and the notification process. Um, and so I, I guess I, if I, if you don't mind, I'd like to jump in with my first question as far as Patrick and staff goes. Can you give us a little bit of background as to like how we fell on the number six per year? Can you just explain? Because I know that council member Urban and I had both expressed some concerns about that low of a number, uh, per year and, and we kind of just passed it to, to get it passed. So can you just kind of tell us how you came to that number or staff came to that number?
Um, I think it came through conversations at city council, um, at one of the previous study sessions. Um, I don't think, I don't remember. We may have threw out a number, but I, I'm sorry, I don't remember. I was gonna pull my, pull up my notes from, um, two thousand and nineteen to see if I could see what, uh, what conversation was had. But I think it was a discussion between council that we land, why we landed on six. And I don't know.
Uh, Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, uh, I think, Leah, I'm pretty sure that that came out of a, a consensus, if I remember correctly, but I think it was one of those types of consensus where it was like, it started big and it started small and it went back and forth and then six got the majority of the consensus. And then, and then it went into the vote. But, um, one, one question that I did want to ask though is, um, can we please have more explanation about the, uh, special use permit? So in the, in the packet, there's the list and, and I've been a part of, uh, conversations where we have approved special use permits. So I'm, I'm, I'm pretty clear about how they operate, but I would say that the, um, kind of the little diagram that we got doesn't really give you is the amount of information that we actually end up going, looking at when we do a special use permit process. So, um, can we maybe just get a deeper dive into the special use permit process?
Yeah, like Mr. John Stone is back on screen. So I think he's ready to speak to that. Thanks, Ken.
Of course. Um, yeah, the special use permit process, I mean, I, I guess maybe, uh, if I can have some time, I might just give a kind of a quick outline of what that looks like. Um, it, you know, starts like all, uh, land use application processes with, you know, a conversation at staff level, a pre-application meeting. Uh, it does trigger a neighborhood meeting. So there's, there's notice to the neighborhood that, you know, there's a, there's the potential for an application to be submitted. Um, so there's, you know, there's probably pros and cons to that, but I think on balance, pros that, uh, you know, the neighborhood would get notified that, you know, that's, there's a potential for, however we define this, right? That there's a potential for a special use for whatever we're calling this. Um, you know, there's a lot more work to be done as to what exactly that would be. But, uh, it engages the neighborhood with the business owner that's proposing, uh, the operation. Um, and the, you know, I think another one of the, and, and there's then a series of criteria that have to be met. So, you know, writ large, I think special uses are uses that may or may not be appropriate in a given zoning district and a given contextual location. And the special use permit process and the criteria for review are really, uh, intended to kind of look at the nuances of how appropriate it is in that particular location. Um, the other, you know, I think advantage potentially, and I'm not lobbying for this, um, necessarily, but, uh, is that y- you can conditionally approve a special use permit. Uh, you can conditionally approve it in terms of specific operational components, which might be important when it comes to this topic, such as, um, hours of operation or days of week. I mean, it could be that, um, you know, outdoor amplified music is, you know, perfectly appropriate in certain locations and maybe conditionally appropriate in other locations because it's a, a location that's more embedded or adjacent to a neighborhood as opposed to, as opposed to perhaps something that's, you know, on a major commercial corridor, not really proximate.
Uh, reach out and then um I did a little bit of um discussing this issue with other businesses that have amplified. Sound events um and got some feedback from business owners that use this method, method and um for, you know. To, to seek revenue um within our community and, and also kind of stake a name for themselves. Um so. Uh, we wanted to bring it forward just to ha- open up um the issue for. A little more discussion and kind of see where council members are at and revisit and see if we got it right the first time or if there. Might need to be some revisions made.
Thank you, Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks, um, and just to piggyback on what um Leah said, um, so. Uh, I, when we first um passed this noise ordinance, um, it was newer on council and um. Now, since we've passed the ordinance have um, I have a lot more information. Um, since um, we've passed that original noise ordinance where I've heard from a lot more residents um. Putting the noise ordinance out there um and seeing how it's impacted businesses. How it's impacted residents both positively and negatively. Um, you know. We, at least I can speak for both Leah and myself, um, because we've been hearing from a lot of constituents about this. Um, but it was just, it just seemed really necessary for us to bring this back. Um, and, and even when we passed this originally. Um, we said that we were most likely going to come back and, and revisit and see how things were going. Um, and so this is just us doing that. Um, a couple of things um that I'm, I'm really hopeful we can. Address in addition to the permitting um this evening is um. Looking at um how we rolled out the initial noise ordinance and if there's a possibility for us to. Um, reengage and re-roll out the noise ordinance with our business owners. And our residents and um also, you know, work with Chief Murtha to make sure that. Um, everybody's on the same page as to what the ordinance um does. There seemed to be a lot of. Confusion in the initial rollout, and so that's one of the things that I hope we can um address um tonight. And then also, um. If we can, um, this is, this has been really one of the toughest parts of the whole conversation. But is getting down to how we, outside of the industrial um businesses. How we measure and what we consider reasonable and unreasonable and just have that conversation. Um, to decide if that's, if we want to measure that or if we just want to. Go with the permitting process, but I just think it's important for us to, to talk about that. So I just um. Wanted to bring up a couple of those things that I hope we can discuss tonight too. Um, thanks to everybody also that um came and spoke and gave public comment um at the earlier part of the meeting tonight.
Uh, thank you. I had a uh comment to hand from Ms. Hoppy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, so. For me tonight, the goal would be for us to have some sort of direction on. Um, where we're going with the permit process. I would prefer that we don't touch the industrial zoning. Um, and also the study sessions that we had in the past. In those, in those informational um packets, there, there was information about what. Our communities around us are, do and how they're doing it and a, a lot more information about that. Than what we have in this packet tonight, and I think that's because the direction. Was that we were going to be looking at the permit process for the amplified sound event. So if we're going to go and dig into the entire thing again, then um I'd like to say. Timeout, we don't have all of the information sitting in front of us and I'm, I'm unwilling to have that conversation until everybody has. Done that research and that study piece. I am however willing to have the conversation with the special use permit process. Um, because that's the information that we have laid out in front of us tonight. So I just kind of want to put that. Out there that if that's, if that's what we want to talk about that piece, then I think we have all the information we need for that. If we're going to dig into other pieces, then um I think that we need the other pieces of information for it.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you. Yeah, so I would, I would agree that the, the uh main points that we wanted to address tonight um are the permit process. And the notification process. Um, and so I, I guess I, if I, if you don't mind, I'd like to jump in with my first. Question as far as Patrick and staff goes, can you give us a little bit of background as to like how we. Fell on the number six per year? Can, can you just explain? Because I know that Councilmember Urban and I had both expressed some concerns about that low of a number. Uh, per year and, and we kind of just passed it to, to get it passed. So can you just kind of tell us how you came to that number? Or staff came to that number?
Um, I think it came through conversation at City Council um at one of the previous study sessions. Um, I don't think. I don't remember, we may have threw out a number, but I, I'm sorry, I don't remember. I was gonna, gonna pull my, pull up my notes from. Um, two thousand nineteen to see if I could see what uh, what conversation was had, but I think it was a discussion between council that we land, why we landed on six. And I don't know.
Uh, Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, uh, I think, Leah, I'm pretty sure that that came out of a, a consensus. If I remember correctly, but I think it was one of those types of consensuses where it was like. It started big and it started small and it went back and forth and then six got the majority of the consensus and then, and then it went into the vote, but. Um, one, one question that I did want to ask though is, um. Can we please have more explanation about the uh special use permit? So in the, in the packet, there's the list and, and I've been a part of uh conversations where we have approved special use permits, so I'm, I'm. I'm pretty clear about how they operate, but I would say that the um, kind of the little. Diagram that we got doesn't really give you is the amount of information that we actually end up going, looking at. When we do a special use permit process. So um, can we maybe just get a deeper dive into the special use permit process?
Yeah, like Mr. Johnstone is back on screen, so I think he's ready to speak to that. Thanks, Ken.
Of course. Um, yeah, the special use permit process, I mean, I, I guess maybe uh if I can have some time, I might just give a. Kind of a quick outline of what that looks like. Um, it, you know, starts like all uh land use application processes with. You know, a conversation at staff level, a pre-application meeting. Uh, it does trigger a neighborhood meeting, so there's, there's notice to the neighborhood that. You know, there's a, there's the potential for an application to be submitted. Um, so there's, you know, there's. Right pros and cons to that, but I think on balance, pros that uh, you know, the neighborhood would get notified that, you know, that's, there's a potential for. However, we define this, right? That there's a potential for a special use for whatever we're calling this. Um, you know, there's a lot more work to be done as to what exactly that would be, but uh it engages the neighborhood with the business owner that's proposing. Uh, the operation. Um, and the, you know, I think another one of the. And, and there's then a series of criteria that have to be met. So, you know, writ large, I think special uses are uses that may or may not. Be appropriate in a given zoning district and a given contextual location. And the special use permit process and the criteria for review are really uh intended to kind of look at the nuances of. How appropriate it is in that particular location. Um, the other. You know, I think advantage potentially, and I'm not lobbying for this uh necessarily, but uh is that. You, you can conditionally approve a special use permit. Uh, you can conditionally approve it in terms of. Specific operational components which might be important when it comes to this topic such as um. Hours of operation or days of week. I mean, it could be that um, you know, outdoor amplified music is, you know, perfectly appropriate in certain locations and maybe. Conditionally appropriate in other locations because it's a, a location that's more embedded or adjacent to a neighborhood. As opposed to, as opposed to perhaps something that's, you know, on a major commercial corridor, not really proximate to. Residential locations where noise would become an issue. Um, so there's the ability to kind of um. Ap- approve it conditionally um with, a- and also it can be conditional to the operator, right? So it wouldn't necessarily run with the land. So that you'd be having kind of an operational discussion with the particular business owner. Uh, to align kind of the conditions of approval with what their, you know, perfect business model is and what. Uh, what we think, you know, some reasonable restrictions potentially on that business model are to make it fit in uh with the location in question. Procedurally, um, after you start the process with the uh, with those first steps with staff. And, and I would just note that, I mean, depending on how, how you'd frame this, I mean, some of those conversations at a staff level. You know, would, 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 I would want to say discouraged, but could certainly. Throw some cautionary flags out there from the get-go if we think it's a, a, a tricky or a dicey location to. A lot, to permit amplified sound in a, in a more permissive way. Um, ultimately, they can be approved administratively. Um, by the Community Development Director, my position. Um, and there's a few different uh triggers for when they would. Come to City Council for review. Uh, they don't trigger a Planning Commission review, but they, they can trigger a City Council review. Um, generally, those are um, I think.
And we're losing some of your sound.
You are?
I don't know if there's anything you can do about it, but yes, you're, you're kind of cutting in and out.
Okay, I'm gonna turn off my video. Sometimes that helps.
Okay. Okay.
Shoot. How's my sound now?
Uh, better.
Okay, great. Um, so generally, um, again, they can be approved administratively uh if uh an applicant uh objects to. A recommended condition of approval that I might impose on that uh approval. Um, they can request a City Council hearing. And if there are uh formal objections to the application from uh the neighborhood noticing process. That too would trigger a City Council review. So on some of these, let's say, more contentious locations. You know, just be advised that it would likely require a public hearing before City Council. So that in a nutshell, and I, I don't have the, the crit- I don't know that we need to, you know, dive into the criteria specifically, but. Essentially, the criteria are designed to address neighborhood compatibility in, in terms of, you know, potential. Nuisance types of, of, of impacts, which is why I think we've thrown it out there amongst the range of. Uh, possible uh considerations in terms of a regulatory approach uh on these types of operations.
Okay, your, your sound, your, your sound quality is still diminishing, but uh thank you for that answer and Ms. Hoppy has a follow-up question.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that, Ken. Um, I. I want, I'm, 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 I'm gonna use an example of what, of, of, of business that we have that has a special, has a special use permit. And one of them is the, um, they're the Sub- Subaru um Pros. And part of it was because a piece of their business wasn't necessarily allowed in their zoning. So it went through a, a special permit process um for it to be able to do that one particular piece of their business. So it's like ninety percent of their business they could do, but they. There was one thing that they couldn't do. So that's something that went through like a um, a process and the special use permit process. And um, when we looked at it, you look at the surrounding community, um, you hear what the community members have to say about it and the, and then you. You know, and then you approve or deny the special use um permit. It, because it's a special use permit. Um, it's not a use by right, therefore it would then be if it did come to council, then it would be. Up to council. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be something like we were saying, you have a use by right and so you can't have that use. So I just wanted to um kind of put that out there too. One reason why I'm asked, oh, sorry, Ken, did I get that wrong?
No, you did. You got it absolutely right. I was just gonna s- state that um it's definitely a discretionary approval um at, at council's discretion.
Um, and, and one reason why I, I um am so interested in this option four B is because. Um, a conversation that I had with uh Councilwoman Holte brought forward, um. In my mind, an issue that we would end up running into later on down the road, which was once Clear Creek Crossing is built out. And we have, you know, that whole entertainment area and we have um, let's say, uh, you know. A, a something, a, a, a wine bar that has uh, you know, live music on the weekends. Would that be a more appropriate place for somewhere to have more than six permits? Than somewhere that's maybe uh embedded in a neighborhood? And the answer to that is yes. Well, we're trying very hard. To figure out a process that works for our community as a whole. This is not about one, it should not and cannot be about one block. And with one bar. It cannot be. We have thirty thousand plus people in our community and. Many small businesses and we need to make sure that we're doing what we can um. That works effectively for all of them, which is why I think it's been so hard to nail down this noise ordinance. And, and so um, so for me, I personally feel like the, the four B is probably our, our, our best. Pathboard and I appreciate Councilwoman Holte um giving me that perspective of, you know. We have communities that aren't even built yet that we need to try to keep in mind while we're, while we're building these regulations. So um, that's all I have for now.
Additional comments? Uh, Ms. Hutchinson?
Got it. Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I'm just thinking, you know. We voted on this and we voted on it eight zero. Okay? I would like to know the difference between special permit and a regular permit and also what is the definition of a dicey location? Like a s- a special permit would be in, because to have, we made a decision, this is getting more complicated just like it was before. And we're making decisions right now about things that aren't even built yet and we don't even know what is going to be there. I mean, we're not clairvoyant. So right now we do have an issue about noise and we're trying to, I thought we're trying to handle it. I don't want to see us just keep pushing it down the road, down the road, you know, we voted on it. And residents do have a right to have, you know, a quiet neighborhood and it's not just one neighborhood. We have, we have quite a few bars that are on Thirty-Eighth Avenue right now. So it's not just one neighborhood. But people do have a right to have a quiet neighborhood and if it interferes with them, I mean, I think it's an issue. We voted on six permits and now we want to change it. So I'd like to know the difference, okay? Six permits versus special permit, but maybe what's in a dicey neighborhood or a location? I don't know what that means.
Um, I, I, I can attempt to, to address some of your questions, Ms. Hutchinson. Um. Well, the, the permit process that's in place now in ordinance that you did approve, um, City Council approved, that's. That's a um, a blanket permit process for any entity that wants to um have outdoor amplified sound event. Um, as Ken just explained, Mr. Johnstone explained, uh, as, an SUP, special use permit process. Would make that more specific to um the location of, of that restaurant or bar. Um, and could be specific to that business. It wouldn't apply to a bus- it, you could have an SUP that has certain restrictions in it. For s- for a restaurant on Forty-Fourth Avenue and you could have a, a separate SUP for a bar restaurant on Twenty-Ninth Avenue and they could have different restrictions, different. As Ken mentioned, different time limits, different decimal levels, um, different number of permits. Um, so that's the difference between those. I'm not sure what you're referring to when you say dicey. Neighborhood or business. Are you saying dicey?
Yeah.
Is that something?
Cause that was brought up and I, that's why I didn't know what that meant. But a special permit though, you're, you're just stating like it's for a restaurant or a bar or something like that. Well, what if somebody in their neighborhood wants to have a special permit like for the whole block or something like that? I mean, is that something that? Uh, people can do or is it just a business?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, I guess, it's, it's um, any private, I guess we have to look at the definition of that um in our current ordinance. And, you know, when we first adopted this, we did talk about um neighborhoods having block parties. Um, and if they wanted outdoor amplified music, they would have to um get a permit. So it's, it's not necessarily just a business. I, I keep using the, the term business because that's what we're dealing with primarily at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I have Ms. Holte and then Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, to kind of follow up on Ms. Hoppy's point, um, a couple of points. Uh, I really, I'm with her. I like the, the four B option. Um, you know, we did come to a consensus about six. Seemed like a reasonable permit number for the average business who occasionally has live music as part of their business model. Um, but we do have some businesses in our community that exist now. Um, and we certainly are looking at, you know, having tools in our toolbox to attract, you know, diversity of new businesses in areas that we're significantly investing in. You know, to attract new residents and businesses um who might want to have more, more music. Um, and I think what, what I really learned. I think many of us uh who've been on council, like this was our first issue, whether it was a year and a half ago or, or earlier. Um, is that it's really specific to the neighborhood and the location and the impact it has on those local businesses. Um, you know, Ricoli's is in. My district and they're on Wadsworth and if they had loud music, um, you may not even be able to hear it on the patio because they're on. On Wadsworth, but you know, there are businesses that we have in our community that could actually have the capacity. To have live music more frequently and not impact the neighborhoods at all. Um, the special use permit to me um really allows that conversation. So if there's. A neighborhood like we've been hearing from off of Forty-Fourth and Iris or other neighborhoods, um, you know, it would take the conversation to the neighborhood level. And that granular decision-making to me best serves our communities. Um, so I'm, I strongly support four B. Um, keeping it at six as it stands now and if the business has a model that. Uh, wants to expand beyond that, then it becomes um a more tactical conversation. That um is with the neighbors and um ultimately, you know, could end up in council. Um, but I, I definitely support that approach because I think it allows us to. Be more point-specific. Um, so Ms. Hutchinson's question, the one comment I did have about that was. Uh, I, I wouldn't, I mean, I don't think we can really extend that into the neighborhoods that, you know, to me, this feels like it's exclusive to. Commercial and mixed-use zone districts, um, which would create a little distinction. Um, and if we did that, uh. I would think we would reduce the residential permits down. Um, I think if we all had an, if everyone had neighbors that was doing six. Permits a year, uh, we might find we're not as mad at our commercial corridors and uh maybe wanting to move out of our neighborhood. So. Uh, that would be my recommendation to consider would be reducing uh residential permits to um, to actually to two. I, I can't imagine anyone in a residence needing more than two a year. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I guess, uh, um, let me think. I just lost my train of thought, sorry. Um, but when it comes to the actual permit, does it run with the land or does it run with the applicant? And what is the ability to revoke that special use permit uh in, in this particular case?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, it, it can be granted to run with the land or, or not to run with the land and I, and I. Uh, so in other words, if uh, if we felt like uh it should be specific to the applicant and their business model. Um, and the specific, you know, limitations that might be imposed upon that through the SUP process. Then it would often be limited to not run with the land. Um, the other thing with SUPs. Um, that, you know, may be of some interest is that uh they can be called up by City Council. Um, and I, and I'd have to read the code, but I think that's regardless of whether City Council was the approving body or was administratively approved, but. City Council has the authority to call up an SUP if you believe it's violating uh in violation of their uh, their, their granted approvals.
Okay, thank you. And, and that was my main concern and, go ahead, Charlie.
You'd asked about uh revocation as well and yes, SUPs, SUPs can be revoked uh upon call-up or. Uh, typically, we, we probably also would standard language as a standard condition in the SUP. That it can be revoked for violation of the terms and conditions of the, of the permit. So that, that's a tool that's always available.
And it's, it's maybe a bit of a nu- maybe a bit of a nuance, but just to throw it out there, we're, 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 we are having this discussion is that uh. In mixed-use districts, uh, there is not an SUP process, there's a conditional use permit process for certain uses. Which has some parallels to the uh, to the SUP process, but um it's also very different, uh, very different in the fact that. Uh, it does not have the, uh, it's, it's, it is entirely administratively approved. Um, and it doesn't have the City Council call-up provision, um, which isn't to say that you couldn't amend the mixed-use code to. Uh, to incorporate um an SUP process, but it, it's not currently constructed to have an SUP. It's only. Constructed to have what are called conditional use permits.
I guess that was my, my last question is relating to that is that as we begin to define what this is, whether it's an outdoor. Uh, music venue or uh some other sort of outdoor amusement, uh, the, the. In what cases do we need to start defining that particular use in code as opposed to developing a special use permit?
Yeah, I mean, clearly we need to further that discussion. Um, I mean, a- a- as I, as I think, Mr. Urban, you, you asked the question earlier today. That uh, you know, our interpretation of the zoning code has been that, you know, there's a, there's various types of commercial businesses that might have. A cause to have an outdoor um amplified sound event. Uh, and it's been our interpretation that that's. Implicitly uh an accessory use to um the permitted, the underlying permitted use. So. Most, most typically a restaurant or a bar, uh, you know, it's been our interpretation that. Uh, that having outdoor music is an accessory to that and therefore is allowed. Uh, but we would need to, to, if we were gonna uh make this a special use or conditional use or whatever. Um, the direction of council would be, we need to, you know, call out what that is uh in the use chart so that we know. Uh, when that process is triggered.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I have a Mr. Stites on my list next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just a quick question and I'm, I'm, I think I'm leaning towards the four B with the uh special use permits as well, just because it. Gives us a little bit more of a scalpel approach, but um, I know like Rocky Mountain Bottling Company is spending a lot of money to build a very large sound wall. Um. Is there a possibility to require some of these outdoor restaurants or some of these outdoor vent, venues to require some sort of sound deadening? As far as uh, I don't, they have companies apparently that uh, that do this um before they can get a special use permit. Um, to spend some money on deadening the sound so it's not just going directly into the neighborhoods?
I think you can pretty much ask for anything in a, in a special use permit process. Um, if that's. Yeah, it, it might be hard to um kind of uh enforce, I guess, what, what. Kind of sounds, deflection is gonna work for that restaurant or bar and for that neighborhood, but yeah, it's, I think it's something, Ken, I, I don't think I'm wrong with that, am I?
You're not wrong, Patrick.
I th- I think more uh, on a more basic level, I think, you know, one of the. I th- I think more uh, on a more basic level, I think, you know, one of the, you know, one of the tools you might, you know, discuss as part of, you know, reviewing a location for, you know, outdoor live music would be as a starting point, just the location on the site, right? So if it, if, if the, if the site does a but or is proximate to residential, uh, but also is adjacent to a major street, you might encourage that the, the location of the uh, the music venue portion of the site be, you know, airing on the commercial side of the property is versus the residential. Um, and you know, you could certainly look at other more passive techniques such as landscaping in terms of creating buffers. Uh, but it would, you know, all be fairly nuanced based on the specifics of the site.
How many, and this might have been in the pack and I missed it, how many permits have actually been applied for since we uh put this in?
Two different businesses have applied for a total of six permits. And several of those permits were either relinquished or moved to a different date because of the weather. Uh, particularly around Saint Patrick's Day this year. So there have been a relatively short list of both applicants and permits under the ASCP program.
So, and they were given six for the calendar year of twenty twenty or six or just however many remaining?
We have interpreted this, the ordinance to mean twelve in any consecutive rolling twelve month period. So it's not six in twenty twenty-one, it's six in any rolling twelve month period.
So we're revising the ordinance, but people haven't even applied for their own amount of permits yet?
No.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, I have Ms. Holtein and then Ms. Hoppy, and I have a question down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm gonna backtrack a little bit on my comments. Um, I feel like, uh, you know, I, I mentioned we reduced the number in the residential neighborhoods and that sounded good to me. Um, but I'm actually even just thinking about, I have a neighbor around the corner with several kids and um they historically get a bouncy castle and have some live music or something for kids' birthday parties. So um, I guess I'm gonna rescind that comment and try and keep it clean and just focus on the commercial right now. And if at some point we find we have issues in how this is playing out in the residential, um, we can readdress it then. But um, you know, we have, it takes communication every time we change this. And um, I'm okay if we just focus on how this looks in the residential or in the commercial. Um, and then a question, can we, and Ken, I think you sort of answered this, but I'm gonna just put it on the table anyway. Um, I mean, could we be looking at like special permit is a little bit of a hybrid of what we're seeing in some of these other recommendations? And that, yes, you can have your permit, but like you can't be able, you know, you can't play past, you know, eight o'clock on weeknights and ten, you know, like have time parameters and decimal parameters around that as well.
Yeah, that's certainly an option. I, I think um, the one thing we wanna be, I, I think just considerate of is from an enforcement standpoint, and I'll maybe speak on behalf of the chief at my own peril. But uh, you know, it, it, it becomes difficult to enforce when, you know, you got a different set of rules uh, for each site as it pertains to the live music. So I, I, you know, to the extent that things like, that are quantifiable, like hours, like um, like decibel limits, I mean, to the extent that you can keep them consistent and quantified at a citywide level and then work on, you know, the edges, the margins, the nuances on a site level, that would probably be advantageous from a enforcement standpoint.
Great, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Hoppy.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask, there are a few other um, kind of cleanup items. And so I just kind of want to put out there and see um how um, how the council feels about it. You know, one of the things in the current uh ordinance is that uh you have to notify uh, within three hundred feet foot radius of your, of your business that you're gonna have an event coming up. And I think that while the intention was good, I think that um, that if we could get rid of that, then that would also help the business owners, um, you know, try to get rid of kind of this extra regulation. Um, another thing that came up is the um, the calendar year versus the ongoing twelve month rolling period. Um, I did have a, a, a business owner that has amplified sound events ask me if there'd be any way we could put that into a calendar year instead of a rolling twelve months. Because it'd be um, it'd be easier to, for this person to like, that it's, it's easier to be able to plan. Like at the beginning of your year, you can plan out what all of your events are gonna be throughout the calendar. Um, and then um, there were five um, uh, requests from the police department in our memo. Um, changing the definition of unreasonable noise, adding a new definition of unavoidable noise. Um, striking some words, uh, and um, you know, adding some, some language about um, being able to cancel, revoke, suspend uh business licenses. So um, those are all in the packet. And so I was just wondering kind of where does everybody feel about um those uh recommendations and requests?
Thank you. Uh, Ken, I had a question for you. Um, in the, the ordinance, you know, when I look at it, I, as you know, I run a restaurant, we have a patio and we put music on the patio that's amplified music. And I don't consider it an, an, an event, a sound event. Um, but I do, I do consider that the ordinance would uh, would sort of cover that's, that, that type of that type of uh, of sound in a commercial, you know, in a commercial setting. Can you speak to that? That, and then you, because, because also you used, you used different terms like live event or live music event or things like that. And I know that we're talking about uh, about different types of sound or events or things like that, but I don't know. Do you believe that the ordinance addresses the, the differences in those types of um uses?
May, and maybe I can address that. I don't know, Ken wasn't probably involved in um, the drafting of that. But it's, the current ordinance defines amplified sound, Mayor. Um, and it, it is specific to the operation of any loudspeaker, public address system or other sound amplifying equipment for the purpose of giving instructions, directions, talks, addresses or lectures or for transmitting music or sound to any persons or assemblages of persons. So um, it, it would
Pretty widespread.
It, it is. So it, it would, it would cover, it would cover your restaurant bud. And, and I mean, as we talked and even with some of the neighbors of the T-Birds under, understood that um, a restaurant like yours might be different than T-Bird's and the music may not be the same. So I think they understood that um, every location's a little bit different. And it was hard to draft an ordinance under this hybrid approach and permit process approach to address those differences. And that's one reason we've, we've um suggested this SUP process because that could provide you with different level of outdoor events than, than some, somewhere else.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I distinctly remember having a conversation about allowing music from like jukeboxes and stuff like that. So did that, did that not, as I understood it, if you have a jukebox then, and you have, you know, your, your speakers that run throughout your sound system, that runs throughout your property, that is allowed. It was the live events that weren't allowed. So is that not how it ended up in the?
No, it's not live events. It's, it's any amplified music that's outside. So if it's a jukebox that just um projects, the speakers are inside, um, this ordinance does not cover that. Um, it's outdoor amplified sound.
So
A clarification on that all?
Yeah, the, the definition that Patrick references ends though with, with an additional sentence that says these amplified sound doesn't include sound that's not audible fifty feet from the property line. So, and I think that's relevant to the circumstance where you have a patio or something and you do have music playing over the speaker, but it's not a band. And if it's not audible fifty feet from the property line, it by definition isn't uh, an amplified sound and therefore you don't need a permit for it.
Yep, thank you, Dol.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Weaver.
So, I, I, I wanna understand, I, I'm So if the music is amplified like through a sound system, which is what Counselor Hoppy just said, and, but what if it's that banned, but you can't hear it fifty feet from the property? Is that what I understand?
Yeah, I think if it's amplified, you, you're gonna hear it.
You're probably gonna hear it, yeah, okay. And, and so when we're talking about four B, and I just want to understand that we're talking about both things of, of one can apply for these up to six events or they can apply for this SUP?
We gave, we gave you an option there with
One or the other, sorry.
Yeah, we gave you an option with the SUP process that um, you maybe, if, if, if you're gonna have less than six or less um, sound events a year, you don't have to get an SUP. But um, and you guys could determine what that number is. And, or you could say, and then anybody else, if you want seven or more um, events a year, you need an SUP or, or permit. Um, yeah, or you could refer everybody that wants outdoor sound events to get an SUP.
Okay, and so anybody can apply? Or they have to be in a commercial zone? Is that what we're siding on, that you, that one has to be in a commercial zone?
No, I mean, these are things that you have, that you get to decide. You can, there's no rule to begin with, your fashioning rule. And so you have this permit SUP process available. So your challenge, if you choose to, 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 to use the SUP process, is to say, okay, we're gonna use it, now let's say where and how.
Right.
We're gonna use it for all permits, we're gonna use it for seven and up and keep the existing system we have for up to six. We're gonna say that, that you, it's applicable only in commercial districts.
Okay.
You know, what, what you're gonna need to do is start with, do you want to have an additional system in addition to what is presently on the books? And if the answer to that is yes, then I think you take up individual components of it. Otherwise, you'll never get a decision made. You, you kind of knock off one at a time and, and then you'll have the outcome.
Ms. Weaver, today, today's ordinance, as it's written, it's um, permit for amplified sound event could be anywhere in the city. It doesn't matter what
Okay, I, and, and of course, I'm, I'm also thinking about where I live as well, you know, in, in that I do event type things that have, often have amplified sound, um, just
We lost you, Amanda.
Yeah, uh, Ms. Weaver, I don't hear you
Going to not individually sort of hurt or help these individual businesses? Are you guys still hearing me? Okay, um, my, it looks like my internet was kind of going in and out. Um, I, 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 this is a half-baked idea, but I think a lot, as I'm sure the mayor does, about the actual facility that I am, I am using and where the music is being played and how it amplifies throughout a, a neighborhood and who's going to be affected. Um, and I have been through, through, through this special permit process because of the nature of the business I have. This, this permit process is not difficult at all, by the way. It is, the, the city's, it's a, it's a very straightforward process and I've been through it many times uh when there have been events at the farm. Um, so I do want to let people know that it's a, it's a really reasonable process, I think, that, that the city has. Um, I do think we should consider facility a bit. Um, I know that there's a particular bar that we've been discussing and, and it has particularly bad infrastructure for amplifying sound throughout a neighborhood. And, and I like that place and I like listening to music there, but I also can understand how that particular place, the infrastructure that has been built in that it's highly concrete, it has no sound barrier. Um, and that music will amplify into the neighborhoods. And so I'm, I'm just wondering in all of this, if there is some onus that the owner of the business needs to have on considering how that music does amplify. Because you're right, each one of these businesses has different kinds of music. And while I'm probably not going to have a rock band at the farm, you'd be able to hear it all the way throughout Wheat Ridge if, if, if it were at particular, particular points on the farm. Um, so maybe facility is something to consider as well. I don't know. Sorry, thanks, thanks for my meanderings there, tolerating them.
Um, Ms. Hoppy.
I'm going to try to start to chip away at this rock. And I'm gonna start by asking if we have a consensus to amend the ordinance to require a special use permit process for businesses that want to hold outdoor sound events and require the S, special use permit for blank, I'm not saying a number yet, blank or more outdoor sound events in a twelve month period. So do we want to move forward with the special use process? That's my concern. Do we, do we want to do that?
Okay, um, I'm gonna have
I would like to support that, but it really depends on how many that number is for me, Ms. Hoppy.
Okay, well, I, I was gonna, okay, I'll put a number in and we'll see how it goes. Um, require a special use process for um, eight or more outdoor sound events in a twelve month period.
I have a question, Ms. Hoppy. Um, so I feel like we're kind of playing uh Price is Right a little bit here with like highest and lowest. So instead of, I, I would like to suggest instead of a consensus on that number, uh, if we could have just a short focused conversation on that because I, you know, some people might be sitting here hoping the next number is six or the next number is ten. Um, that's just how I'm feeling. So I don't know if other people are, are sharing that, but um, I, I mean, I think we're really close between six, eight, ten. But I might be hesitant to say eight if what I really want is six and I don't know if we're going towards ten or what have you, so.
Sure, I guess I, I'll start and I'll say I, I am comfortable with up to eight, not more than eight.
Just to, just to be clear, basically as a use by right, so any, in, any, but any establishment can have up to eight without doing anything?
Eight, and then you have to go to a special use permit process.
Just to clarify, we would be ditching the regular permit process completely at that point then?
Yes.
Yes. No, 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 you have to have that regular permit process up to the eight, right?
Oh.
Because then that's how you know if someone's having more than. Um, so I, I would love to hear if anybody else has any other numbers that they would like to put out there or if they support eight.
Uh, Ms. Hutchinson, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I need some clarification. Exactly how many permits are, we're not talking about the six regular ones anymore. We're going to special use permits and now it's eight? Or what?
It would be, the, the way it's written, it, it would be the regular permits up to eight. If your business wants to have more than eight or up to, we're trying to come up with a number. So that's why I would really like people to raise their hand and say a number rather than just keep shaking your head, know what the number I'm giving. But up to a certain number and then if you want more than that, you have to get the, the special use permit.
Oh, so this is for a consensus and it looks like we have two, uh, two hands?
No, no, no.
Okay, are these, are these questions, Ms. Noslerbeck?
Sorry, I wasn't shaking my hand at, my head at the number. I was just trying to ask a question. And so, um, I, I think it would be really helpful if we could just have like Patrick or um, whoever can best explain the difference between the two permits. I, I think it would be really helpful if we could just have, like Patrick, or, um, whoever can best explain the difference between the two permits. Just explain like what a special use permit is, and what the other p- permit is as well, because we have a lot of people tuned in tonight, like, trying to understand what this is, and I, I would like the clarity too, just what's the difference between the, the, the permits that already exist, the six, and then a special use permit?
Okay, well, again, the, the, today, the permit process, um, is, is a permit process for any entity that would like to have outdoor amplified sound. They can apply for a permit through the city clerk's office, um, and they have up to six in a twelve-month period. A special use process is what Ken Johnstone explained earlier, um, could be specific to a specific location. Um, and it's either approved administratively through Ken, or ha- it could come to city council for approval, it requires a neighborhood meeting. Um, and it, it goes through that process that's in your packet, that attachment, um, that last attachment. Um, there's a pre-application meeting, there's a neighborhood meeting, um, SUP process i- or permit is, is drafted that includes specific, that specific location, what they can and cannot do. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and my one, my one follow-up question to that is just that, for businesses, do they either go down the six permit process? Or what, or the special use permit process, or can they utilize both options?
Based on Ms. Hoppy's current consensus on the table, she's suggesting that, um, if you want, if a business wants to have eight or less in the twelve-month period, they go through the permit process that we have in place today. If they wanna have more than eight in a twelve-month process, they have to go through an SUP process, which requires the neighborhood meeting, and potentially come into city council for approval.
Okay, so, they would have eight, just of our regular perma- our noise ordinance permits? And then if they wanted to have any additional events beyond that eight, they would have to go through the special use permit process?
That's what Ms. Hoppy is suggesting.
Okay, thank you so much for letting us just kind of walk, walk it through, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hoppy, or, uh, Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Why not leave it at six permits, and if they wanna go beyond that, then do special use?
You could, that's an option. Um, Ms. Hoppy, um, suggested eight, but if you wanna make that consensus, that's an option also.
I do.
Mr. Ray. Ms. Nosler Beck?
And also, um, I, I did really like, um, Councilmember Hoppy's suggestion of the calendar year, but are we not addressing that portion of the, okay, we'll go there yet?
Not yet, I'm, I'm trying to just chip away one thing at a time, to decide if we even want to go with the special use permit, um, process. So, so my original, wh- what I originally wanted to do is to see if we, if we actually wanna go down the road of the special use permit process. And then, it was suggested that maybe I put a number in there, so I put a number in there. And then, it was suggested that maybe everybody just kinda tells us what number they want, so that we're not playing Price is Right. So, then I asked everybody to tell us what number they wanted, so we weren't playing Price is Right. But I'm, I'm, I'm going to try to just go for, for this. And if you don't like this number, don't put your hand up, and I'll ask for a different number, and we'll just go that way. So, I would like to ask that if you want to have more than eight amplified sound events, that you have to apply for the special use permit process.
And, and, to be clear, Ms. Hoppy, and up to eight, they still have to apply for the permits that we have today?
Up to eight, you still have to utilize the permit process that we have currently. So, I'm asking for a consensus for that, and if you don't like the number, don't put your hand up, and I'll see what I can find out there.
One, two, three, four, five, six. I count six hands, so that's, uh, some, some strength in that position?
The next thing that I would like to ask for consensus is that we end the three-hundred-foot notification requirement.
Two, three, four, five.
This is the requirement that the restaurant has to send flyers out to every household within three hundred feet of them if they're having an event.
One, two, three, four, five, six, there's six votes for that consensus.
I have a question, will they still have to notify with a sign though, as regular special, special use permits require?
Well, I believe we're talking about not the special use, but the initial, the initial-
Or, excuse me, the, the, so, when I have done events at the farm, there is a sign that goes up that announces that I'm gonna be doing X, Y, and Z. And, and I have not sent out flyers, because I'm required to put a sign up. So, is this instead of the sign, or is the-
Is this, is this because you're getting a, is it because you're getting a temp- a temporary liquor permit?
Probably, yeah, that usually goes with-
Yeah, these, the, these thing, these guys already have their liquor licenses, so they don't have to put up the temporary liquor permit sign?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, I would like to ask for a consensus that, um, we change it from a, a rolling twelve months to a, a calendar year, starts in January, ends in December.
Seven, looks like we have seven, uh, eight votes for that.
I'd like to ask for a consensus, um, regarding the recommendations from our police department, and the amendments to the noise ordinance for clarity, or to increase the objectivity for enforcement of officers in the field. The first request was change the definition of unreasonable noise. Should I read the whole thing, or we're good? So, change the definition of unreasonable noise, um, as requested by the police department, can I have consensus for that?
We have eight votes for that.
I would like to ask for a consensus, uh, for clarity, or to increase the objectivity of enforcement for our officers in the field, to add a new definition of unavoidable noise.
Unavoidable noise? Eight votes for that?
I would like to ask for consensus to amend section sixteen, one oh three, uh, Mr. Doll? Do we, will we still need this section sixteen, one oh three, if we change to a, sorry, let me check that. We might not even need that consensus, let me check.
You'll still need the, the entire section, but, um, but the, the, you'll still need the section, you're just taking out that prima facie kinda silly standard.
Will this still be measured at the, at the source of the sound, and not the property line?
Yeah, the, if you just take out those two words, remaining structure of that section remains. So, it's, it's just kinda changing the legal standard a little, and that, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Doll, I'd like to ask for consensus to amend sixteen dash one oh three B to strike the words prima facie as prima facie from the ordinance.
Looks like we have, uh, consensus on that.
Like to ask for a consensus to amend section sixteen, one oh three D to read, "No person shall conduct an amplified sound event in a manner which exceeds the levels specified in section sixteen, one oh three B, without first obtaining a permit to do so. An outdoor amplified sound event on private property is permitted under this section, under the following conditions." So, it, it erased all the words of shall, uh, shall user cause to be used any loudspeaker, sound system amplified, and added, so it erased all of those words, and it added "conduct an amplified sound event."
Ms. Hoppy, the purpose of this amendment is just for clarity, um, there was con- some confusion if this was con- uh, considering indoor or outdoor sound event. Um, the way the language was written, it, it made it sound like we were talking about indoor music too, so that's why we drafted that differently.
Thank you, so I'd like to ask for consensus for that change.
So, it looks like we have, um, consensus for that, um, that one?
So, the next one, I feel like actually needs some discussion, and it's adding the following language to the ordinance, which is, "The city may counsel, cancel, revoke, suspend, or similarly suspend the business license of any business which permits, permits noise in violation of this section pursuant to the procedures in code sections eleven dash thirty through eleven thirty-two." Um, Mr. Mr. Goff, maybe you can speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, we, we said, we're suggesting to add that, and, and maybe the chief and, and Jerry can also speak to this, but just provides us another tool of enforcement, um, if a business isn't complying with, with this ordinance. And, um, we've, we've, we've had that issue, um, in many other different areas of the city, and, um, we found, um, it's most successful to be able to, um, use that as an enforcement tool to take away their business license if they're, if they're refusing to comply. That usually gets them to the table fairly quickly, um, if they don't wanna lose their license, business license.
That's, it's a strong tool, we have that in place for, uh, the massage regulation, as you well know, and, uh, that's, uh, suggested, I think, also for the, uh, tobacco retail licensing, uh, scheme that you're seeing. I think you can see, uh, first reading, I'll see you on second reading. Uh, it's, it's a, it's a tool that's available to you, and it really is a very direct tool, as, as Patrick mentions.
Further discussion on that, Ms. Hulteen?
I have a question, um, you know, we, we're talking about multiple instances here, but, um, what is, uh, when something like this gets passed, what is our communication strategy to let businesses know about this? I mean, by the time you violated this nine times, like hopefully you'd be aware of it, but, um, I just wanna make sure that, that we've got businesses that are, are in the know, if this is the tool we're using.
If I might answer two, two things, uh, at a first level, obviously, uh, it would seem to me if the city changes the noise ordinance in the way discussing the revision, once it's gone through first reading, second reading, public hearing, of course, uh, then the final version, if it gets adopted, I would expect, uh, that, that would be shared with commercial businesses primarily, to say, please be advised, this ordinance. Uh, and, and Patrick or Ally may wanna speak to how that would get broadcast. On an individual business basis, or a violation, there is a process, as it says in code eleven thirty through thirty-two, is the business licensing chapter. And, and if there's going to be a consideration of revocation or suspension of a business license, or the business licensee gets a specific notice delivered to that licensee, and an opportunity for hearing in front of the city treasurer, the treasurer can appoint an administrative hearing officer. So, because that's very important, you shouldn't, you don't take a license away without them knowing that they're, they have an opportunity for hearing, show up at the hearing, and, and go through that whole process. So, those are the two ways that you would know generally, and specifically in connection with an individual business.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Urban.
Hey, Ms. Mayor, I would be in support of, uh, making sure that city staff has the power to revoke their business license in this situation. And, you know, just overall, on this particular issue, I think it, it was frustrating that we don't really have a whole lot of data or a track record on this ordinance, as it relates to whether it's working or not working. So, that's sort of frustrating to me, as we go through this, should we do this, or should we do that? Because we just really don't have the background data to tell us what's working and what's not. But, I, I would agree that, as we talk about, you know, what tools the city has, the ability to revoke a, a, a business license, I think, is crucial. So, I'd be in support of that.
I'd like to ask for a consensus that we add the following language to the ordinance. "City may counsel, revoke, suspend, or similarly suspend the business license of any business which permits noise in violation of this section pursuant to the procedures in code section eleven dash thirty through eleven dash thirty-two."
Looks like we have consensus for that.
Uh, and then I, I would just like to ask staff, um, what is the plan for the new rollout process? And, um, is the, is the, making the new, when we make the new ordinance active, um, will we be able to have the rollout process in place?
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at, um, we don't have this scheduled yet, so, um, for first or second reading. So, um, if you wanna do this immediately, we can get it scheduled as soon as possible. If you wanna give us time, so that we have time to roll out, um, you know, in addition to what Mr. Doll mentioned about notifying businesses, we, you know, we have our, our connections newsletter that goes out to every business, every household in the city. Um, I think we have, um, yeah, we have one that goes out, I think, May, the next one's May, so perfect timing, I think. We could get a, we could get something in the next connections, it goes out mid-May, I think, right, Ally? Um, so we could do that, so we could, we could base it, um, effective date of the ordinance, based on, um, when we could get enough information out. We could send a mailer to, uh, all of our businesses that we believe, um, would have, um, would be using this, um, ordinance for outdoor, um, amplified sound. Um, Ally, anything else, um, you could think of?
No, thank you for mentioning that, I do think, you know, we'll do a lot of direct communication, straight to the businesses by email and mail, which is really important, in addition to all the other broad tools that we use in general, update the FAQ. We've got, um, a section on the website that we'll, um, obviously update with, uh, frequently asked questions, and forums, and all the, all the pieces.
Uh, Ms. Nosler Beck, and then Ms. Hoppy.
Can we just, um, because there's an impact to, um, business license holders with this, can it just go out to all of our businesses in Wheat Ridge? Because, you know, there's businesses that might be hosting an event, it might not be a, a restaurant, or a place that usually has music, but, um, 'cause it could impact their business license, I just think it's important that they, they know this.
Yeah, I mean, we, if, a couple of different ways we could handle it, um, you know, again, the connections does go to every business, um, you know, I don't know if they're, if they're, if they're more apt to read that, or a letter that comes from the city. Um, we have an email blast that we can send to, we don't, I don't know if we have every business on that, but we have a pretty good email blast that goes to most businesses. Um, you know, we, we could send a letter to every, every business in the city also, if that's something you guys would like us to do, but, um, hopefully they'll read one of, they'll read one of the, the things that they get.
Well, and I just, um, because of, because we, I heard from, um, some businesses that they didn't know about the noise ordinance, I just would love it, um, if we could point to like an email that was specifically about this one issue, that we can say, you know, you got that. So, anyway, I don't thi- I think you guys get it, we don't need to talk about it anymore.
Uh, Ms. Hoppy?
Um, I'm, I'm concerned that we still haven't addressed the, being able to have a, a non-live music, um, at your restaurant. So, like, being able to have music on your patio, I feel like we still haven't addressed that, and I, I think it's important. And, so, is there a suggestion on how we would address that, Mr. Goff?
Well, we could change the definition, um, I think we're, we may open a can of worms, I'm not sure if we can, um, I'd hate to try to create a new definition tonight at nine, nine seventeen, um, I think we may-
Could we make an exception? Could we do an exception for, for, uh, satellite music, jukebox, like that type of music, can you do an exception for that?
For outdoor?
Yeah, you can have satellite music, or your jukebox playing on your patio, like, can we make an exception like that?
Well, and we do have, again, we have the, the one, um, clarification or exception, that if it's not audible fifty feet away from the property line, maybe we could increase that to a hundred feet, so maybe that would capture more of those, um, other sources of music that you're talking about. Um, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if the chief has any idea, based on the complaints they get, I don't know, fifty feet, a hundred feet, a hundred fifty feet, I don't know what's that's gonna capture, not gonna capture, um.
Ms. Dozeman, you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you. So the way I'm interpreting this is so long as it's not an amplified form of sound, then, right? Sorry, bud, you laughed there, but I mean, if it's, if it's live music and there's no amplification, then it's not falling under this purview, correct?
Well, if it comes out of the speaker that's, you know, amplified in my office, you know, my back office, then it's, it's background music, you know, it's muzak on the porch. But it's amplified sound.
And jukeboxes would be considered amplified sound, I would believe.
However, I think what Ms. Dozeman's asking is like, like somebody with their guitar that's not plugged into something.
Acoustic.
Acoustic.
Doesn't help, but the jukebox does. And so I feel like there needs to be a way for us to address this. I can tell you, I've worked in restaurants where we weren't allowed to have music on the patio. And I've worked in restaurants where we were allowed to have music on the patio. And we constantly, at the restaurant that I worked at where you couldn't have music on the patio, people were constantly asking us for music on the patio. So I feel like we need to address this somehow.
Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's without opening a can of worms. I mean, I feel like we've, so we've got the 50-foot specification that currently exists. And, you know, in my mind, ex-real estate agent, you know, 50 feet is like the width of a standard real estate property. And not in Wheat Ridge where we have no standards. You know, I think if we extend it to 100, chances are we're not hugely impacting people. And I think a lot of what we're talking about is like a guitarist with like a small amp to be heard on the patio. And I think in general, that's not the type of noise that is generally impacting neighborhoods. And, and as we've said many times tonight, we're all recognizing this is an ordinance I'm confident we're going to talk about again before my term is up, if we need to revisit that. But I think, I think what Mayor Starker's talking about, you know, is the sort of ambient music that a lot of our restaurants have that isn't necessarily impacting the quality of life of the adjacent neighborhood. So I would, I'd like to ask for consensus that we change that to 100 feet from 50 feet.
Consensus for 100 feet there. It looks like we have consensus on that. All right.
That might be it, Mr. Mayor.
Number of consensus is there. We've, have we thoroughly vetted this issue at this time? I mean, this will, this, this is going to have legs to it, so we're going to have some more discussion on this. Mr. Goff, do you think you've got enough, enough direction in order to go back and with Mr. Dahl and Chief Murtha and the other smart people we have in our city? Bring back, bring back a new ordinance?
I would just like to ask Ms. Chief Murtha if, if, you know, he, him and his department are the ones that have to enforce this out on the street, if there's anything that he's concerned about before we call it a evening, chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We were constantly finding areas of disordinance that, that were challenged with today. For example, one of our supermarkets, we had complaints that their COVID safety announcement, which was being broadcast in the parking lot, was violating the ordinance. We had to go over and we were able to negotiate with the business and they unplugged it. At this point, we, we think everybody knows safe distancing and washing their hands. But that was one we didn't anticipate. So as you go forward, I, you know, I, I think for our direction, we just would like to know how you want us to enforce it, either through decibel readings or through reasonableness. Either way, works fine for the police department. There's going to be somebody happy and somebody unhappy each time we do that. We currently have a decibel reader and we go out and we, we see where it sits with regard to the, to the table that we use that was created under this ordinance to see, you know, what, what actually is happening with the noise. When our officers go out for complaints about unreasonable noise, that's really a subjective place and it puts us in a difficult position because their idea of reasonableness may not be the residence, may not be the business owner's idea of reasonableness. So just looking for, for direction there, I hesitate to say, but I think half of my complaints end up in one of your inboxes. So I'm trying to eliminate some of our complaints ending up in your inbox. But I don't know that there's a perfect way to do that through enforcement. But clarification of those was, was much appreciated of the current ordinance. And then as we go forward, just direction on how you want us to enforce it from, from that perspective of decibels versus reasonableness.
Well, today, today it's, it's reasonableness and there's, we didn't change it this evening. The only decibel level that we have, just to remind everybody, is for the industrial zone property. And, and for when you have a permit, when you do pull a permit, you can't be over 75 decibels.
Right. We're just, we're sampling around these other businesses. For example, we got complaints about a range and some of their noise and people are interpreting things. They're reading into the ordinance the way they want to read into it, so we have to kind of unscramble that. But we are using the reasonableness standard for most, most of our complaints right now. So we'll continue to use it unless we get a different direction.
Okay, thank you, chief. Any, I guess, any additional discussion on this item, Mr. Kirkpatrick?
Very quickly, staff, please remember when you're evaluating the process for special use permits, that liquor licenses are tied to not just a business or a premises, but to a specific area that has to be outlined in a map. So if you have a special use perm, a special use permit, you would need to make sure that the liquor license and the special use permit line up. That's all I wanted to say.
Mr. Stites?
This was probably answered, sorry. Are the special use permits and the permits, so are they tied to the property or to the business? Sorry, because what if multiple businesses share the same property? Could they all apply for different permits under that?
To the business?
They certainly could. They certainly could. And hopefully, the beauty of a special use permit process, because it's, it's not something you're entitled to, and so it can be layered with conditions, that might well be that one doesn't get issued if there's already other permits, you know, in that, in that, on that same strip center, for example. So that you'd have, in the judgment of the persons issuing the permit, either Ken Johnson or the council. But that's frankly too much. And you might be in the position of saying no to numbers two, three, and four, just because of that. And it absolutely doesn't run with the land unless you say it does. With these kinds of permits, it's much more likely that the condition that the staff will recommend is that it be personal to the applicant and stick with the applicant because it's the applicant that's saying, you can trust me, this is my business model, we'll never do the wrong thing. And that's fine, and you probably can. But if they sell that business to someone else, it's someone else. And that someone else can certainly apply and get another permit. And that's, that's fine, but it does give you the opportunity to bring that someone else in for an application.
Thank you. Additional discussion on this item? Pretty well vetted at this point? Okay, well, Ms. Weaver?
Sorry, I had, I had one other question that kind of goes with Mr. Stites. As far as the allowed number of, I'm not going to say the right word, up to the number of six or eight.
It's eight.
What?
Eight, based on your consensus tonight.
What are they called? They're not special use permits. What are they?
Amplified sound events permit.
Amplified sound events. I'm not saying I would do this, but are we worried that someone will apply for a week of bands? You know, is it okay that they use all six or all eight or whatever, all in the same? Because I was just thinking through that, there's really only eight months that you can have outdoor music. So just a thought.
The way, the way the ordinance is currently drafted, yes, they could use all eight in one week.
Thanks.
Or one week.
That would be the Woodstock provision, Ms. Hoppy.
We certainly could look at changing it so that you can't use more than two in a row or put some sort of condition on it like that if anyone feels like that's something they want to.
Well, remembering, again, it's a special, it's a, it's a permit that can be conditioned.
No, Jerry, we're talking about the first eight.
Yeah, the Woodstock provision applies, I agree with the mayor.
Okay. Additional discussion, or are we ready to let our staff and legal counsel get back and do some work on this and bring it back to us? Let's, let's let you all go do some work and bring us back your best work on this and we'll, we'll take another shot at it if that sounds all right. Want to thank everybody for a lot of, for a lot of brain power.
Are you suggesting this comes back to study session or do you want it to come back to first reading?
Discussion on council. Do you think we're ready, Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think when we were talking about trying to make that May connections that we would really be needing to look at bringing it to first reading in order to make that deadline. Am I correct? In my, I'm really bad at calendar math, so.
Yeah, we could get it if, yeah, based on tonight's consensus, we could get an article in, in the May edition. But yeah, I mean, we'd want to be careful. If it's not fully adopted yet, we want to just say the council's considering this or, but yeah, let's see. I'm looking at my calendar here. Sorry, give me a second.
Patrick, if I might, the, the chapter 26 zoning code amendments, we'll need to go to the planning commission for a public hearing. So, you know, that is not going to happen until May, which pushes this council consideration into June. I mean, we'd have to look at dates a little more carefully, but just don't want to forget that planning commission process.
Or the special use permit?
Correct. If you consider that this permit we're inventing has to be a quote special use permit in the same way that a chapter 26 special use permit is, it's really a permit for an activity a little differently. I mean, it can be seen as a permit for an activity, kind of like a business activity that doesn't necessarily have to be considered a use. I recognize that we consider, and Ken has said, that we consider these as an accessory, amplified activity as an accessory use. And so it fits into the land use scheme, but, but it also has attributes that really aren't as classically land use special use permits. So that's maybe a discussion we'll, we could have at staff level to kind of figure out which, how to characterize this as a permit system, whether it's just a pure special use permit, ala chapter 26, and fine, or whether it's a kind of a slightly different version of that.
Looking at the calendar, I don't think honestly we can get a public hearing and approval done before our deadline for the connections anyway. So we can take our time if we need to.
Okay. I just want to add to that, please don't hate me, my beloved peers. It dawns on me with the timeframe that we're talking about, based off of needing to go to planning commission and some of the delays by the time that this would be enacted. And we may have businesses in our community that have already hosted four or five events and then they would be eligible to, I don't know if that means that then they would be able to host eight more the rest of the year. So I would want to make sure whatever language we're looking at adopting roughly halfway through the year isn't, isn't creating a loophole there. And I'm not sure what the solution is, but as we're talking, I think there is a difference between adopting this in early May versus in June in terms of how many of those permits might be issued and used by our businesses. So.
And that's originally why we used the rolling 12 months, because it was adopted mid-year last year and it was difficult.
Are we able to just say, like, for 2021, any permits already applied and issued will apply towards the eight allowed in 2021?
We can craft a transitional section.
Okay.
I'm certain of it, that recognizes permits that have been issued prior to the effective date of this ordinance. And, and I'm certain we can look up a transitional provision that gets us through 2021.
Okay, I think that's important because that, especially from some of the people we've really heard from, if that loophole creates that problem, there's going to be a hot mess quickly again. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Jerry.
Then our plan would be to bring this back on first reading? Okay. Any, any further discussion on this agenda item number two? Okay, we will close on agenda item number two. Thank you very much. That concludes the, the two action items. We will now go to staff reports. Mr. Goff?
Nothing this evening. Thank you, mayor.
Okay. Elected officials reports, if you have something, just to raise your hand. Mr. Kirkpatrick?
Very quickly, we have openings right now on the liquor license authority board, the board of adjustment, and the cultural commission. And so we will be advertising to fill those rather quickly. But I wanted to alert council that we will be looking for volunteers.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of quick things. If Ken's still listening, I'd like to thank Ken and Greg Mootson and others for hosting the Wadsworth district meeting about 10 days ago. It was very informative. We did record it and hopefully that recording will be made available. And there were a lot of great questions and I just really want to thank them for their time. I am hosting my every other month district meeting on Saturday, the 17th at 9:30 a.m. and hopefully that'll be on the city calendar soon. And then lastly, Councilwoman Weaver and I have been working with Parks and Rec and our sustainability director to apply for a conservation district grant to improve some programming at Happiness Gardens and help promote more partnerships between our community partners and our market growers for growing more local food. And we found out this week that we were awarded the grant. So I just want to thank my, thank Ms. Weaver and city staff for all their good work on that. And it makes me really excited that we're going to be giving more attention to Happiness Gardens. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional elected officials reports. Ms. Nosler back?
Thanks, everyone, for the hard work tonight and thanks to all the staff for everything that you put together so we could talk about this. And real quick, Janice, I'm sorry, council member Happy, it's getting late. Council member Happy and I are hosting a town hall on lessons learned and our path forward with COVID on April 13th at 6:00 p.m. and that's going to be on a virtual platform. You can email us directly if you have some questions for some of our leaders in the COVID space that are going to be joining us. Some of the folks that will be there will be County Treasurer Jerry DeTulio, Dr. Comstock from Jefferson County Health, and Susan Miller from Jeffco School. So April 13th, 6:00 p.m., see you on another Zoom call.
Okay, thank you. Additional, additional elected officials matters? Going once, going twice. Okay, thank you very much. I want to thank you for all the work that we did tonight. I want to thank those citizens and residents that came and talked to us and spoke to us. We appreciate your comments. A couple of announcements here. On Saturday, this coming Saturday, April the 10th, I will host a coffee with the mayor at nine o'clock virtually. On, let's see, we have Drug Takeback Day on April 17th. let's see, we have Drug Takeback Day on April twenty-fourth from ten AM to two PM at Lutheran Medical Center on Thirty-eighth Avenue. We'll be able to get rid of your old and outused and and drugs that you would like to get rid of in a safe manner. So take a look at that. And then my only other thing is that I would like to wish a very happy happy one-hundred-year-young birthday to Ira Muriel Frank in District One. She will be turning one hundred years old tomorrow. So thank you very much to her. And if there's no more, no more work to go before the council for the study session, we will plan to meet next Monday night at seven o'clock in our regular session. And with that, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all so much. Good night.